The council will come to order. Please use the e-vote application at this time to record your presence for purposes of quorum.
The quorum roll call is now open. Please mark yourself present from your device. Please raise your hands if you have any technology issues. Be prepared to mark people, too. Alderman Dow needs support. Alderman Smith needs support. Alderman Sawyer needs support. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Silverstein. It's been a minute. I'm now going to call any of the Aldermen who have not marked themselves present. I'm going to call on any Aldermen who have not marked themselves present. And if you're having issues, just let me know. Alderman Hopkins, he's not here. Alderman Dow needs help. Alderman King, not here. Alderman Hairston's already. Alderman Sawyer is having difficulties. Alderman Sawyer is present. Alderman Mitchell's getting help right now. You can mark him. Alderman Beal. Working on it. Alderman Beal is present. Yeah, mark Beal. Mark Dow. Mark Sawyer. Alderman Burke is not here. Alderman Coleman is not here. Alderman Moore is not here. Alderman Curtis is, uh... Alderman Curtis, can you mark yourself, please? Alderman Curtis just did. Alderman O'Shea is here. Alderman Taylor is not here. Curtis just said he's... Curtis said he's doing it now. Alderman O'Shea... Alderman Brookins is not here. Alderman Tito Lopez is not here. Alderman Maldonado is not here. Alderman Burnett is not here. Alderman Irvin. Irvin signing in. Reboias... Alderman Reboias, can you mark present?
He is.
Okay. Alderman Wagisak? Is he marked?
He's present.
Okay, mine is not refreshed. Rodriguez Sanchez? Ramirez Rosa is not here.
Rodriguez Sanchez.
Mitch is not here. Rodriguez Sanchez is here. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, can you mark herself present? No? Okay, she's...
Can we mark her?
Mark her. Alderman Brookins, can you sign in, please? He doesn't know his password, okay. Riley is not here and Andre Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez, can you sign in, please? Okay.
But it's... Doesn't feel like it's good.
Okay. We good?
Are we good, Madam Clark?
We are now closing the vote. Alderman Tony, I will mark you present.
Alderman Mitch? Did you get Mitch?
We are now closing the vote. Did you pass it? All right. There are 38 members present. We have a quorum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand. Our nation, under God, indivisible, just as we do justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Rabbi David, Dr. David Baumann, from the Lake Shore Drive synagogue. Rabbi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is David Baumann. I am the rabbi, as the mayor said, of Lake Shore Drive synagogue on Elm Street in the Gold Coast. I'm also the head of Judaic Studies at Akiba Schechter in Hyde Park. Rebono Shalom, Master of the Universe. In these challenging times with the ongoing COVID pandemic, the war in Ukraine, and local issues such as gun violence and drug abuse, it is important that we in this chamber dedicate ourselves to identify the needs of our Chicago community and bring our individual talents and communal talents to address how we can help. Holy One, blessed be He. Bless the voting members of the council and the other officers of government in this city. Help them to deliberate and negotiate as they guide this city in the promotion of health, justice, and safety for all who live within her boundaries. Bless the citizens of this city who sent our elected officials to represent us in the spirit of mutuality motivated by the common good. May we find inspiration now and forever in the beautiful tapestry of human diversity that comprises this city. Arous our empathy to the suffering of our neighbors. Fill our hearts with joy when our neighbors succeed. Give us the capacity to be generous with our time and with our possessions when confronted by a neighbor in need. Give us the opportunity to take pride in our children's growth, learning, and achievements. And may our children take pride in us when they see us cooperate and collaborate on their behalf and on the behalf of the common good. Avinu Malkenu, our Father, our King, eradicate the pandemic along with violence, hunger, and all forms of destruction from this city and this earth. Oh compassionate and holy one, gracious God, have compassion on us in all your works. Please join me in saying amen.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, is a public comment. Mr. Clark?
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for all the matter reviewed. Our first speaker today is Vale Jones.
It's actually Val, not Vale. How y'all doing? I thought you said 30 minutes altogether, but it's not. I am a Chicagoan. That's how I'm gonna represent myself today. And all this is gonna be off the top of my dome, because I'm real pissed off. I know we can't cuss, but I just said that one. Shout out to Lil Dirk. If y'all play to y'all, know why we hurt out here. I got a proposal for you. They call you... I don't know if you identify in your masculine energy, but they call you Uncle Laurie. So, but I identify as TT Lightfoot sometimes, because I bring the resources to Woodline, Inglewood. You didn't come to the South Side Summit. You just did a video show or whatever. But We Heal is a nonprofit. And the City of Chicago is using my nonprofit as an initiative. So I want to know, can I get like a million dollars so I can break some money counters around here? Like, what do I need to do to get happy around here like mad? Like, how much money can I have to experience mania and so my TT babies don't go crazy around here? Because we big mad out here. My love right here, she want to speak, but then we gonna break the damn rules by letting her speak. Shout out, babe. Say something. Say something. Pass the peace ordinance. Pass the peace book ordinance. All that. But I'm mad. We can't pass no peace if we pissed off. All these commuters, they throwing trash out in our community. We don't got no murals on the South Side. What happened to South Side Invest? See, now, I'm really finna get mad, because you pissing me off enough to make me motherfucking cry. Take my papers. Take the, uh, water guns and shit. I try to [BLEEP] off to your office. Check your email that I just sent as Valerie Jones instead of Val, instead of Bee, instead of what I gotta be when I'm on the South Side. And all that dirt, debris, all them, all them bandoos, I'm taking over the bandoos. But I need money, funding. But I'm not the type to beg for shit. We don't beg for nothing over here. So cut us a check. Family Independence Initiative, they got money. Fund us. Give us money. But we don't like handouts. We don't stand in last. We get that shit. Peace, push your teeth. Or who the other one? J. Cole. I wanted to speak myself, so I decided not to make that playlist that y'all invited me to with the "Together We Heal." I got appointment at four o'clock for that. Or the City of Chicago Treasury. What's her name? Tiffany? Blue Cross Blue Shield? They giving money out to black businesses, but we don't know about it, because we can't do the motherfucking paperwork. This only project...
Ms. Jones, please refrain from using profanity. Thank you.
I'm the cussing counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Your time has expired. Our next speaker is Kyle Lucas.
Hello. My name is Kyle Lucas. I'm from Better Street, Chicago. Rafi Cardenas, age two. Wilberto Rivera, age 76. Lily Shambrook, age three. Peter Paquette, age 75. Jalon James, age 11. These are the names of five people, neighbors, friends, family, children, who should be here with us today, but were tragically killed by traffic violence in the past two weeks. Each of these deaths were preventable, and the City of Chicago is on the hook. We refuse to accept this as normal, and we are demanding that you take action. It's a pathetic shame that in 2022, in the face of a sharp rise in traffic violence, the ever looming climate crisis, and crumbling infrastructure and transit, that we are here fighting over speeding tickets. In the same room, we have grown adults who can't imagine anything will make our streets safe but ticketing, and others who seem to have a personal problem with keeping their lead foot off the pedal and think that's policy. Many of you who voted yes in committee yesterday have stood in the way of safe street infrastructure in the past. You can't have it both ways, wanting to get rid of speeding tickets while also refusing to implement safe street design or pass the peace book ordinance. There are several specific concrete solutions that must be implemented in order to make our streets safer for all Chicagoans, whether they are two or 102. Prioritizing pedestrian and bike safety over parking by implementing expert recommended gold standard road designs instead of watering them down for the small but loud anti-safe-street crowd. Requiring all large trucks, not just those used by city contractors, to be outfitted with side guards and reinforced expanded limits on their access on our neighborhood streets. And addressing Chicago's poorly enforced illegal parking crisis through updated street design that includes safe loading zones and focus enforcement and consequences on the most dangerous and frequent offenders: commercial vehicles, rideshare companies, and, yes, the Chicago Police Department. And making our streets safe means partnering with and empowering our city's youth and passing the peace book ordinance. This is not rocket science, and it's time for the city to stop forcing us to beg and demand for safe streets and cowering to the voices of those who block projects for selfish desires. The City of Chicago bears the responsibility to protect its residents, and right now, you are failing us. Safe streets should be the default. Each and every one of you in this room has outsized power to make our safes, uh, streets safe. And the question is, will you? If not, get out of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas, for your comments. Our next speaker is Paul Ellenberg.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Paul Ellenbogen. I'm here representing the Jewish Council on Urban Affairs and the Bring Chicago Home Coalition. I'm also resident of Fourth Ward. Unlike many of you, I was not born and raised in this city. And, but over the past 35 years I've lived here, I've got a chip on my shoulder about being a second city or a third city or being a city that's behind other cities in this country. And on the issue of homelessness, we are well behind other major cities. And that's why I'm here in support of an ordinance that would go on the ballot that would raise taxes on real estate transactions over $1 million, residential and commercial, and direct all of that money towards alleviating homelessness in the city. I would urge all members of the council to support this ordinance. I speak as someone who is privileged enough to have enjoyed the boom in Chicago real estate and as someone who would probably at some point in the future be paying this tax. To be clear, I want to pay this tax, and I want to see all the money going towards addressing the needs of the homelessness, which I think are readily apparent to anybody who walks our streets under a viaduct or goes anywhere in this city. The Bring Chicago Home, uh, tax would apply only to transactions over $1 million. The people who can afford a million dollars for a condo or a house or an office building worth as much as a billion dollars certainly stand to benefit from this ordinance. And while cities like Los Angeles and New York and Houston and other cities you can really about have done a, a good job at addressing homelessness, we have not. We're well behind. We're well out of the top 10, and we have the means to do so now. So with that, I would say I am standing here loud and clear to say yes in my backyard. Please increase my taxes. Please direct the money towards alleviating this profound issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ellenberg, for your comments. Our next speaker is George Blakemore.
Good morning. My name is George Blakemore. And I am... Young lady, I don't need you to be by me. And, and what... I'm here to speak on, on the behalf of the citizens of the City of Chicago. Now, my main focus is on the black citizens. And I want it to be known that I am supporting Lady Lightfoot. I want it to be known, all of this corruption was here in this city long before Ms. Lightfoot became mayor. Well, she promised to clean it up. All of them promised to clean it up. David promised. Emmanuel promised. Old man David promised. It's a culture of corruption here. Ms. Lightfoot, I would suggest, and you Aldermen also, do not wade in this water when it comes to Michael Scott's war. You know what nepotism means? Entitled to something because you're related to a person. What you can do is have a special election and let the citizens of that ward pick who they want. I don't want to know if we don't have the money. Yes, you got the money. All of you. I'm talking about Ms. Lightfoot, and I'm talking about all you lowlighted Alt. The black one. The white one. The Hispanic one. The Asian. All of y'all. So when you get ready to throw out the baby, throw, throw all y'all get out. It's time enough that this democratic machine should go. It's time enough for us to help two or three political parties in this great city. Again, I urge you, do not appoint Michael Scott's sister. Nepotism. Who? You appoint him, his daddy was Alt. And then, uh, uh, old David. That machine is corrupt. It's just like you having sex with your mama. That's how lowlight it is. Do not go there. Let the people, the power to the people, let them make the selection to who they want to represent them. So, Ms. Lightfoot, that wasn't good advice. And you Aldermen down here, do not rubber stamp it. Send it to the 24th War. They live there, in that ghetto. You don't live out there. I don't live...
Mr. Blakemore, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Richard Zupkus.
Hello. My name is Richard Zupkus. I'm licensed as a drain layer, a sewer specialist by the City of Chicago. I've been working on sewers for over 30 years. I care tremendously about the well-being of all people, and I'm really good at getting at and transforming the actual source of problems with sewers. Currently, Chicago utilizes a combination sewer system where both sewage and rainwater are combined together into the same sewer system. When local sections of this combination sewer system are overwhelmed by rainwater, then that combined sewage rainwater is dumped and pumped intentionally directly into the Chicago River and also backs up into the lowest drains of susceptible buildings, both which cause very nasty major damage. I'm proposing that we finally separate this combination sewer system by installing new plastic municipal sewer mains dedicated to receiving only wastewater from newly installed four-inch PVC lateral sewers connected to Chicago's residential buildings. Schedule 40 PVC is melted with primer when glued together for a solid connection that does not leak. Thus, we are allowed by Illinois State Code to install these four-inch residential laterals in the same trench when also replacing lead water lines with K copper. Let's do it at the same time, please. We have this huge opportunity. We leave the current original sewer structures intact to receive only rainwater, which can then no longer flood into people's homes. And since this rainwater will no longer mix with our sewage, check this out, the entire Chicago River will finally be clear, clean, safe, fun, and respectful to our entire world. Plus, these new four-inch PVC lateral sewer lines will no longer require rotting and expensive repairs, saving the people and our city lots and lots of money. We can start small, replacing the sewer lines along with the water lines of specific areas at a time until every home has been updated. We can keep the deep tunnel project to store the excess rainwater until it can be lightly treated before it's sent down the river. Right now is the perfect time to commence on this project. Let's please get together, plan it out wisely, have various engineers figure out the best game plans, contract out the private companies and/or use Public Works employees, whatever is best, most affordable, in a win-win fashion for everyone involved, and that includes every one of you, please. And let's get the surrounding municipalities involved in this project, too. I am committed to this, the Chicago Sewer Project, and we'll meet with whomever. Please forward this information as wisely, as widely as you can, and text me. Thank you.
Mr. Zupkus, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Ward Miller.
Uh, yes. Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and Aldermen and Alderwomen of the Chicago City Council. I'm Ward Miller, Executive Director of the Chicago-based nonprofit organization Preservation Chicago. We ask your consideration today to support several historic landmark quality buildings, which remain threatened structures and facing an uncertain future. Two of them are churches, the historic St. Adalbert Church in Pilsen, a cornerstone of the Latinx and Polish communities to which a downzoning is being considered today. This is important in order to determine a clear path for the church complex looking to the future, and downzoned properties can always be rezoned with the proper plans presented. We'd also like to see St. Adalbert's Landmark, which is something we've envisioned for eight years and was listed as the Chicago Seven Most Endangered by our organization in 2014, 2016, 2019, and part of the larger grouping of Roman Catholic churches in 2020, 21. We'd also like to request the same for St. Michael the Archangel in South Chicago at 83rd and South Shore Drive and a rededication of that building to our emergency responders. Both should also be landmarked. We at Preservation Chicago also would like to see the City of Chicago outreach to the Government Services Administration, the GSA, to protect the century in consumers' buildings located at 202 and 220 South State in the heart of Chicago's Loop, next to the Bergoff Restaurant. These two early skyscrapers owned by the federal government are earmarked with a $52 million line item to be demolished. These buildings should be repurposed per our proposal as the Chicago, as the innovative Chicago Collaborative Archive Center and also landmarked. We will also risk our nomination of nine early Chicago skyscrapers as a UNESCO World Heritage Site, bringing millions of people to Chicago if these historic buildings are demolished. There is so, so much to lose. Therefore, we want to request that the City of Chicago do all it can to prevent the demolition of these four important buildings. And we thank you, and we will be there to support these initiatives at every, at every turn. And thank you for the opportunity to address all of you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your comments. Our next speaker is Katrina Garcia.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and City Council members. I'm Katerina Garcia from Our Lady of Lourdes Parish in the 47th Ward, Ravenswood area. Our Lady of Lourdes Church is known for its history and its unique feature. In 1929, this church was moved across Ashland Avenue on logs and turned 90 degrees, making it one of the largest building relocation projects in U.S. history. It was also lengthened 30 feet, increasing the seating from 800 to 1,370. Its unique feature is a small chapel in the church, which is a replica of the famous French grotto in Lourdes, France. It was made into perpetual adoration, open 24/7 to the public for worship. It's truly one of a kind, not just in Chicago, but in the entire United States. It was part of the Architectural Tour and also featured by Jeffrey Behr on WTTW PBS, among other media and publications. Due to its history and popularity, Our Lady of Lourdes Church needs the interior and exterior to be landmarked. Mayor Lightfoot and City Council members, I humbly ask you to allow Commissioner Maurice Cox to move forward with landmark designation for our church, this close, where the 1987 ordinance no longer applies. The 1987 ordinance only applies to active churches. Rather yet... Rather yet, please rescind the 1987 revision, which requires the permission of the owner of an active church in order to landmark. No other building in Chicago requires the permission of an owner for land marking. On a side note, but in conjunction with landmarks, I'm asking you to downgrade the zoning for St. Adalbert in Pilsen. In October of 2020, the city announced it would move forward with the landmarking of this church. If the zoning isn't downgraded, it'll defeat the purpose. The Archdiocese of Chicago is planning to post more than 100 churches. Please help us save and protect those that are historically significant. Hopefully, I would be able to invite you to Our Lady of Lourdes Church to view its beauty and its unique feature in the grotto. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, for your comments. Our next speaker is Joy Sawicki.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and City Council. Just months ago, the world watched in horror as Putin brazenly invaded Ukraine, slaughtering thousands of innocent people, causing carnage and damage that will impact generations to come. The world has also witnessed to how Poland has opened its arms to Ukrainians because if anyone knows the brutalities of war, it's us, Poles. For hundreds of years, Poland was in one war or another. Ripped apart by her neighbors or land taken from us, men and boys taken from our homes and sent to work camps in Siberia. Many fled, just like the Ukrainians are doing so today. Just imagine. Poles who came to this country were mostly farmers, and they faced intense discrimination here, but they kept their heads down and worked hard. We are a blue-collar community known for our work in the trades. Today, we build and remodel your homes. Mayor Lightfoot, I believe the contractor who did work on your home is Polish-American. But back then, our immigrant ancestors scraped together their pennies and nickels and built many of the magnificent churches that grace our communities with exquisite architecture, inside and outside. Can you imagine any immigrant group coming here today and achieving such a feat? These churches stand as testaments of our deep faith, but they are also gifts to our communities in which we live, from our Polish ancestors to all of us. Today, I am specifically talking about St. Adalbert in Pilsen, which has been part of the fabric of the Pilsen community for 146 years. And what a shame it is that greed and politics seemingly stand in the way of protecting one of our Polish community's most remarkable achievements and are a gift to you. It is a slap in the face to our Polish community that St. Adalbert is not cherished by some of our leaders here today and can seemingly be disposed of to the highest bidder without any consideration of its value to our immigrant community. The Polish community does not ask for much. In fact, I can't think of anything that we ask the city for, but we are asking now. We are asking all of you, when the time comes, to show your support for our Polish immigrant community by voting to downzone the St. Adalbert site to protect it long-term. And also to landmark it, which Commissioner Cox announced would start last year but has not yet started. If the Archdiocese of Chicago doesn't know how to re-envision St. Adalbert as a Catholic site or doesn't want to, we do and we will. We can repair it. We built it. We want our church and our property back. We can set it up for success. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. Sawicki, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Ronnie Islam.
My name is Ronnie Islam, and I'm representing Bike Grid Now, and I'm a resident of Lakeview. I'm disappointed in the lack of leadership from Alderman Tony in the 44th Ward when it comes to supporting safe streets for people. Every time I walk past Nettle Horse Elementary, I think to myself, oh, my God, these kids are going to get killed on our streets by the cars and trucks that barrow through stop signs and unprotected crosswalks. I am envious of the vision that Alderman Matt Martin and his staff have for the 47th Ward. What is stopping the mayor, C.D., and Commissioner Biagi from building a protected bike network that they supposedly want to build wherever feasible? Every day I bike, walk, or take the bus in the city, I am threatened, harassed, or nearly killed by the very thing that stops our leaders from building safe infrastructure. It's our obsession with cars and driving. This sick obsession poses a threat to every vulnerable road user and has helped create one of the most segregated cities in the United States through urban destruction and highway building. Cars jam up our buses during rush hour and fill up our streets with parking that's owned by private equity firms on Wall Street and in Abu Dhabi. Cars make moving, walking, biking, transit, breathing, living, and ironically enough, driving, all worse. Our mayor calls Chicago a car city, even though in her own strategic plan for transportation, she says almost a third of Chicagoans don't own a car and rely on public transit, and that she owes it to us to create a system that is more affordable, safer, and equitable than ever before. Whose side is she on, for cars or for the people? Whose side is C.D. on when they refuse to build the protected bike network because they are too afraid to take space away from cars and give it back to people? Whose side are our alders on if they refuse to take a hard stand against citywide vehicular violence that has killed three children in this month alone? Our alders don't prioritize the safety and well-being of their own constituents. Instead, they appeal to business interests and the will of those who want to drive multi-ton pieces of metal through our neighborhood. Whose side is the city on when gas prices break records? Instead of investing in transit, we mail out gas cards that are worth more than the venture cards we provide, and we still back highway expansion plans along our lakefront. We are watching as this planet warms, as our kids are killed on our streets. We are watching the inability to lead that many alders, the mayor, C.D., and I.D. demonstrate. I am tired of negotiating with my life every time I step outside. The worst-case scenario for vulnerable road users is all too real for the families of Rafi, Lily Grace, Peter, Jalon, and thousands of other victims of vehicular violence. This city isn't doing enough to change that reality. We should not be patting ourselves on the back for a few dozen protected bike lanes or pedestrian bumpouts. We should challenge ourselves to do more than cities like Paris, Bogota, Milan, Mexico City, and Tokyo, who are investing in protected bike infrastructure and transit and shutting out cars and opening their streets to people. Instead, we call ourselves the car city, and if you don't ride with lorry, you're stuck, stuck getting run over in the bike lane. We need side guard on trucks. We need protected bike infrastructure. We need road diets. We need roads designed for lower speeds.
Mr. Islam, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Paula Skniecki.
Hello, my name is Paula Skniecki. I am inquiring about any updates of progress of landmarking of St. Michael the Archangel Church at 8237 South, South Shore Drive, Chicago, Illinois, 60617. I would like to know how further I can progress of landmarking the interior and exterior of St. Michael the Archangel Church. The church has significant rich history to the neighborhood and the community. Other uses for the church building can be used for a monastery, chapel, or shrine. It can be run by monks or brothers. There is also a rectory with the property for the religious order to live. We need to preserve these historical churches and make use of them in other ways. When they are used in a religious way, then other people of the community can still attend and support the building. These churches were built many years ago by ancestors for future generations to enjoy. How can the Archdiocese take over these properties and just close them? They want to sell these properties to pay for the legal fees for the abuse cases. St. Michael the Archangel is a magnificent church, and there will not be no other one like it. Please, I need your help in landmarking the interior and exterior of St. Michael the Archangel Church. Thank you.
Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the comment
This concludes public comment. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you. I move for the temporary suspension of the ruse for the immediate consideration of the ruse committee report recommending the appointment of a new Alderman for the 24th Ward and the associated resolution establishing her committee chairmanship.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on committees and rules, which met yesterday, June 21st, 2022, the committee recommends the passage of the following items. The appointment of Monique L. Scott as the 24th Ward Alderman and the associated resolution updating our committee assignments resolutions to include Alderman Scott as replacing the former Alderman.
Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this matter? Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
On behalf of, on behalf of the Black Caucus, we want to welcome you to this august and esteemed body. We know you have some small shoes and some short shoes to fill, but we welcome you. We know you're going to do a great job. You're from the West Side, North Longdale, born and bred, and you're right across the bridge from us. Whatever we can do to help make you successful, please don't hesitate to call. But again, welcome to the Chicago City Council, and God bless you.
Any other members of the body wish to speak? Madam Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Scott to be. If you're anything like your brother, and I'm sure that there are some parts of him that you are alike, we know you'll do a good job. First of all, we know you come from good stock. So coming from good stock, your family has worked for the betterment of the city of Chicago, and we know that you will do the same. So we want to welcome you to the part of the sisterhood of this city council. We do have a president, which is Alderman Hairston. She'll have words to say as well. But as Alderman Irvin said, you have little shoes, but we know you're going to turn them into big shoes. So welcome to the city council.
Thank you, Alderwoman Austin. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I stand in support of Monique Scott to be the Alderman for 24. And Monique, even though you are coming behind Michael, I'm sure you're a woman that can stand on your own two feet, and you can be able to go in there and do even a better job than what Michael did for the peoples of the 24th Ward because they are even well-deserving of that and much more. So I'm looking for head-down, hard work, and continue to move the 24th Ward in the direction that Michael has started in the past, but looking for you to take it to a better place and know that 37th Ward, West Side, and we do serve as a West Side Black elected officials to make sure that we are working in conjunction, not just for one neighborhood, but for all neighborhoods, including 24th Ward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
I'd also like to be added to the roll call, I mean, to the vote for, you know, being present. First of all, let me say congratulations on, you know, this appointment. But I also want to add, because I see things in the paper, I consider myself a progressive person, I hate, you know, what I call systematic politics. But one thing we often constantly get sometimes berated about is that we don't have a succession plan and that we're not grooming people. And when I tell people, as we're trying to make sure that people know about government, get involved, who do we, should we be looking at first? And that's to be our family. If we're not grooming people in our family to serve, first of all, not to get a position, but to serve, then what are we here for? And it should start at home. And so I think, you know, not only your dad, but your brother have worked with you to be a servant, and you've been serving. You're not new to this, you know? And so your resume undoubtedly speaks for itself, and I don't feel somebody, just because it's somebody, family member, that they should be, for lack of a better word, not considered. And so you stand on your own two feet, and I just wanted to make sure we express that, you know? Because we always talk about succession planning, and succession planning and teaching and learning starts where? At home first. And so I wish I had a brother or somebody that I could, you know, develop and groom to serve, and in that serving, you wasn't looking for this. And that's what I like. I don't like anybody that looked for the position. It finds you, and this position found you. And so I wish you much success, and it definitely going to be, hopefully do anything I can do to help you succeed and the community that you serve succeed. So I appreciate the mayor for, you know, considering everyone that she considered, and from her standpoint, she, I believe, chose the best person who she thought would be the best for this seat at this time. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. Want to commend you on this appointment, Alderman Scott. I want to wish you all the luck in the world. You're entering a very difficult, difficult job, which I'm sure your brother told you about before you put your name in the hat, but it's a great opportunity to serve your community. And I think that your brother had a lot of allies on this floor, and I want you to know that we are all here to make sure that you're successful. You got a lot of challenges in your community, and your success is our success. So lean on us, anything you need. You've got a lot of allies on the West Side and with the mayor, but all of us want to make sure that you do well and your community does well in the years ahead. All the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Congratulations in advance. Your tuna bee predecessor once asked me, kid, you're either cold or crazy. And I think we're all a little bit of both, as I see my mother in the back, and I think that your parents are so proud in having Shani down on all of us for continuing on the legacy of service to our communities. So from your South Side sister, whose ward is remissed of yours, you are the product of the best of the West, but it's still all good in Inglewood. Congratulations, and I love you. And is this your baby? Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. We are so excited and can't wait to see you flourish and grow right here and make history in the city.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like to stand and support this and commend you on your appointment to this seat. Also, you know, thank you for listening to the Chicago Black Automatic Caucus and also West Side Black elected officials who all support this appointment. Monique and Mike, you know, both come from good stock. You know, when I look at you guys, I just think about your parents, you know? I think about how much of public servants they were. Your dad on a broader scale, your mom on a concentrated scale, as you see her as a war suit out there doing her thing and working hard every day, and I know you and Mike grew up around that. I don't know how they juggled you all when y'all were shorties back then, but you all lived through that. You understand public service, but you also recognize and understand how they were concerned about the neighborhood. I mean, they were developers in the neighborhood, they did a lot of things in the neighborhood, they upheld the churches, everybody, they did everything in the neighborhood. So that's in you all's DNA. I think you're a good choice. You know, some of us try to be somewhat competitive here in order to keep us going. I compete with Mike, so, you know, you got to step your game up because, you know, Mike might be trying to compete with me. I don't know if you get on a Peloton or anything, but Mike, we'd be competing and always say that, you know, the 24th Ward is the next frontier because everything's happening over there, there's a lot of opportunities there, you have a lot of vacant land, and there's a lot of things happening. So I hope that you keep that momentum going and you keep it flowing, and whatever we can do to help you, we here to help you. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hairston. Hairston, that would be you.
Madam President, members of the City Council, I rise in support of this. Madam President, members of the City Council, I rise in support of this position and this nomination. Monique, I know you, your family. I've known you all for a long time. And while your brother's all right, I just want you to know that you are the one, and this is perfect for you. And if you wonder why you have been in all the different spaces that you've been in over the course of your life, it was to bring you here. Now, I am truly happy to have another female on the city council. I am really excited to have one that is dynamic, one that is experienced, and one that understands, knows government and community, and is dedicated to making that better and thus making the city a better place. I caution you to run now. It's not too late. You don't have to make that walk, but if you do, you're in, and we got you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
And the cheap seats back here. Welcome to the council, Ms. Scott, as the sibling of an individual who's a Dolphin graduate '89 as well, and as a graduate of Whitney Young as well, and someone who knows the park district very well, but most importantly, someone as myself who represents Little Village or South Longdale. As being a lifelong resident of Little Village, I know that symbiotic relationship between North Longdale and South Longdale, North Longdale and Little Village. And it was not more in focus over the last several years during the pandemic when your brother and I did a lot of work together, building bridges. And I'm looking forward to continue that building of bridges with you. And I'm looking forward to your work here, as we do have a lot of work to do together. And I'm so excited about that. So welcome to the, welcome to the party.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. Like many of my colleagues, I'm voting because you, I talked to you. You seem very prepared for this position. I know you come from great stock. Your father's a great man. Everybody knew him. I knew him personally. But aside from that, I think you personally are going to add a lot to this body, to this debate, everything we got going on, reflective of communities, and I think you know that well. So that's why I'm voting for you. I like Michael, but I like you better.
Thank you for that. The chair recognizes Alderman Talia Pharo.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of your appointment. Monique, I haven't had an opportunity to meet you yet, but I want to say I'm very proud of you for continuing your family legacy of our public service, one that's very distinctive. And I want to say I'm honored also to be able to work with you in this council, on the West Side black elected officials. And I believe you'll be a member of the Public Safety Committee, if I'm not mistaken. So I'll be honored to work with you there as well. And also to be a neighboring ward. We share the south end of our wards together. So I'm honored to be able to work with you, and I look forward to getting to know you. And if you have any questions, please feel free, because I think you're going to be welcomed right back here. So thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Talia Pharo. The chair recognizes Alderwoman King. And I assume you want to record your presence for the record.
Yes, I did that already, Madam President. Thank you very much. Monique, it's great to see you sitting there. You know, I've been able to observe you over the last six years. A lot of people may not know, but you were a park supervisor in my ward. And the way you handled just, I would say, a very difficult dynamic, very involved park advisory committee. You've got the seniors, you've got the youth, you've got the community, you've got the gangs. You managed it superbly. And I know that you're going to bring that same type of intensity and passion that the kids feel for you, that they know, you know, when you walk in the room, there's a level of respect, but they also know love as well. And I know you're going to bring that here. I also hear about what you do in your own community, even though we tried to get you to move closer to the park, but you stayed in your community. So I look forward to working with you in this new capacity. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman King. The chair recognizes Alderman Spizato.
Thank, excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. Monique, it was great to talk to you the other day. It was a short conversation. I'm sure you had 49 calls to try to pull off, and you did your best. But this isn't about Michael, it's about you. But, you know, I can't help myself to just say how much I love Michael, how much I appreciate your work with him, and how much I respected him. So I'm sure I'm going to have the same feelings about you. I'm not going to wish you good luck, because I don't believe in luck. I'm going to wish you best wishes. God bless you and your family. Like I told you, this is a very intense job. You did mention to me how intense the supervisor job could be at your park. And I, growing up as a park rec, I knew what it was like to be a supervisor at a park, and I know the challenges you have nowadays of being short-staffed and so on and so forth. But I just want to wish you the best. From, I'm not going to say from any caucus. It's not from the Black Caucus, or the Sister Caucus, or the West Side Caucus, or the Northwest Side Caucus. I'm just going to say it's from the 38th Ward Caucus. We wish you the best. I'm here for you. It's just supporting other people. Our best wishes to you. God bless you and your family. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spizato. Any other members who wish to speak to this motion? The chair recognizes Alderman Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also stand in support of this appointment. Monique, I'm so excited for you to join the city council. I don't know what I'm more excited about, to not be the newest person on the council, or that a Dolphin is being replaced by a Dolphin. So I think we have enough for a caucus now. I don't know what the rules are, but I feel like four might be a good start. I have the utmost respect for you and for your family. Our fathers knew each other. They served together. And I think similarly, you and I both are going to make a big difference here together. I look forward to working with you and supporting you, however I can. Michael was great. When I was diving into this, and I hope to return the favor in the same way. So anything that I can do for you, please let me know. And this is the most supportive body. I mean, every single person who's said that to you, we're all in this together. So welcome. Thank you.
Alderman Lee, any other members that wish to speak to this matter? Madam Chair, I may, if I may, speak to this briefly, and I'll have much more to say about it after city council. I am honored that you said yes. I'm honored because of your life service. I'm honored because of your heart for North Longdale and your deep understanding of the challenges, but also the opportunities. And thinking about this appointment was very much on my mind, that I had to be thinking about someone who had a heart for the community, who lived in the community, understood the trials and tribulations of that community, and the desire for progress. And you're well aware of the fact that, I'll call him the prior Alderman, invested his heart and soul in making sure that North Longdale got the kind of resources that it had been starved of for way too long, but made sure that we made concrete, tangible steps. Because as you know, people need to see it to believe it. And it's absolutely important that the progress continue and be scaled up. And I became convinced from our conversations, given who you are, your passion, your commitment. I like the fact that you're fiery and passionate. I know a little bit about that myself. But I'm honored to put you forward. I thank the members of the Rules Committee, and I urge that this body vote yes and confirm her as the new Alderman for the 24th Ward. Thank you very much. Madam Chair.
And before I move, I just want to say that to our newest member, we welcome you here. We look, we are enthusiastically happy about you coming and joining this body. But more than that, I know that you're going to continue to change, that Mike started in that ward for all the wonderful things that are transforming that community with a brand-new type of energy only like a woman can do. So with that, I move passage of the appointment and the resolution by roll call vote.
Madam Clerk.
The vote is now open. Please log into your devices, hit refresh. If you have issues, please wave your hand. Please remember to hit refresh on your device, and then hit cast your vote.
Alderman Quinn needs assistance. Alderman Viegas needs assistance. Any other members who need assistance with the vote? Alderman Mitz needs assistance. Mitz.
Is it been a minute? Okay, Alderman Beal, can you please cast your vote? Alderman Quinn, oh, he's getting assistance. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Viegas. Ian Viegas. Alderman Mitz. Okay, I'm now going to ask for a voice vote for those that are having technical issues. Alderman Beal? Oh, he's putting in it. Okay. Alderman Taylor, voice vote, yes. Alderman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, not there. Alderman Viegas?
Yes.
Viegas is a yes. Alderman Mitz? Mitz is a yes. And Alderman Smith just got hers in.
Alderman Michelle Smith.
Yep, she's got hers in. She's pretty fresh. Okay. All right, okay. Viegas is a yes, and the Mitz is a yes. Rodriguez Sanchez is not in the chamber. Yep. We are now closing the vote.
All right, so the ayes are 47, the nays are zero. Alderman Kaplan on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
No.
The motion for reconsideration fails. Alderwoman Scott. As the newest member of our body comes to the dais to be sworn in, I wanted to note the people who are in the box supporting her. She will be sworn in by Judge Patrice Ball Reed. Also in the boxes is Judge Pamela Reeves Harris, Sonia Harris, Madison Stewart, Marita Jenkins, Jennifer Stewart, Theo Dunlop, Randall Phelps, Pam Walton, Pastor Fitzpatrick, and someone you may remember, former Alderman Michael Scott. I think she's emptied out the North Longdale. Okay. And let me stand corrected. The judge who will be doing the swearing-in is Judge Pamela Reeves Harris. Place your right hand on the Bible. And, I'm sorry, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me?
Yes.
I, Monique L. Scott.
I, Monique L. Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I would support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duty.
Of the office of Alderman.
Of the office of Alderman.
Of the city of Chicago.
Of the city of Chicago.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. This is truly, truly an honor for me.
One moment, please. One moment, please, sorry. May the new Alderman have the approval of the floor to address the body. Hearing no objection, so moved. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Please proceed. Please proceed.
Okay. So I want to thank you guys. I want to thank everybody in city council right now. I am a part of this, and the love and, you all don't, you may not think it, but it's truly a lot of love inside of this, inside of these chambers. The warm welcome that I just received this morning, you basically just written my resume for me. And I appreciate that. And it is my responsibility and my duty to continue to serve as you all are. And so you all are my role models, and I will continue to look for you for advice and for counsel during these next challenging months, I'm sure, and over the next four years, hopefully. No, not hopefully, over the next four years. So never the least, we can get back to business, and I thank you again, and I look forward to working really, really hard and serving my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. One second. Sergeant Arms, will you please escort Alderwoman Scott to her seat? The chair recognizes Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report. I now move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. All right. Next up, resolutions. We have three resolutions today. A resolution honoring Majors David and Deborah Dauber for their work leading the Emergency Disaster Services team at the Salvation Army. A resolution honoring safe passage workers, and a resolution in recognition of Pride Month. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move for temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. In the interest of time, we will forego the reading of the verbatim resolutions, and instead hear remarks from city councils. I mentioned the first honorary resolution is for Majors David and Deborah Dauber. They'll be coming momentarily. Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Kaplan.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. I have the Evangeline Lodge in my ward. The Evangeline Lodge, they got it very quickly, and they're actually doing what we now understand as a city, the way to work with families. You keep the families intact. You allow parents to be the providers, protectors, and nurturers of their children. You don't separate adolescent boys away from their families, because you understand that all the family need to stay together. And that's how they grow. That's how they sustain themselves. That's how they get ready to live fulfilled lives. So I am in awe of what has happened with Evangeline Lodge, and I know the two of you have helped make that happen. So thank you. Thank you. And many families who experience homelessness, thank you as well.
Kaplan. Any other members of the body wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, members of the city council. I wish to rise in support of this resolution and thank our guests for their distinguished service at a time when so many were staying home, you were stepping up. Salvation Army's been a great partner for the city of Chicago, and in particular, for the greater Inglewood community, as my brothers and sisters. As my brothers and sisters who are Aldermen from that community know that we've had great relationships with the Salvation Army. We have worked together on numerous things, including providing COVID relief to families. And I want to personally, on behalf of my residents, thank you for your service. Although I do see that there's one slight error in this resolution. Because I don't know anyone who works for the Salvation Army, whose mission is ordained by God to serve, who can ever say with a straight face that they are concluding their service. I don't think that's possible in the DNA of those who work for the Salvation Army. I doubt it's possible in your DNA because I think you will find a way to continue your service, doing God's work in the communities that need you most. So, thank you, thank you, and thank you, and wish you all the best on whatever the next chapter of your lives are. Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. Sorry, trying to, trying to get where you can see. So I too support this resolution. I'm a longtime pre-Alderman volunteer for the Salvation Army and Estha Norwich Salvation Army volunteered for a number of years over there. You guys do so much for this, not just the city, the country. All your efforts, your food pantry, your clothes, just helping people in need. So I just want to let everybody know the Salvation Army is just awesome and I just want to thank you guys for knowing what you guys do, but everybody throughout America, throughout the world, actually, in the Salvation Army. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. Any other members that wish to speak to this resolution? Let me just add my, my voice. Major David and Major Deborah, you have been incredible servants of the people throughout your career and your commitment to service really shined through, particularly given what we have experienced as a city over the last two years. You've been an invaluable partner to us in the work of making sure that our most vulnerable residents were taken care of during COVID. One of my key worries and concerns, and without your partnership, I shudder to think where we would be. So I just want to say, on behalf of a grateful city, residents who were served by your work, who may not even know your name, thank you. Thank you for your service and we wish you the best in your retirement and the next chapter of your esteemed lives. Thank you so much. All right, next resolution honors Safe Passage workers. They will be filling the box momentarily. Joining us today are Tara Davis from AME3, Elizabeth Patrick, sponsored by Black United Fund, Raymond Harris, sponsored by Leave No Veteran Behind, Emma Martinez, sponsored by the Puerto Rican Cultural Center, and Tammy Guerrero, sponsored by In Lase. Also in the box are Jamelle Chambers from CPS and Jadeen Chow, the Chief Safety and Security Officer at CPS. Any members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I'm delighted to support this resolution for what Jadeen and Gregory Sane do over there in that office for what Safe Passage means to my community. I am less than two blocks away from a big high school, which will forever be known as CBS, even though they are Chicago Vocational Academy. But, when I see these workers, no matter how cold, how hot, whether it's snowing, whether it's raining, whether the temperature is below zero, they are out there in the elements being a very consistent figure for our community, for our children to see, and in many cases, dedicated to serve in that corner that they sit up there and serve and protect. They become the eyes and the ears. They work closely with the police department. And so today, I say thank you to all of you, only because what you do is a very difficult job that, and so today I want to say, on behalf of my community, we love and appreciate your service and your commitment to keeping our sidewalks safe, our children safe, our community safe. And so today, I appreciate all your give back to the wonderful city of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Chair. I would like to thank the parents and the community residents that serve as Safe Passage workers, who make sure students get to and from schools safely every day. I want to highlight the lead Safe Passage worker at Kelvin Park High School, which is in my ward in my community. He is committed to the students and making sure they get to school, from school, and to wherever they have to go in a safe manner. And always keeping a praise at what school needs are outside of the building, such as requesting middle, road cross, crosswalks, or stop signs informing me of streetlights that aren't working. I want to highlight the point that Child Trends Research brief, Caring Adults, important for positive wellbeing mentor like adults outside the home can be a resource of promoting positive wellbeing for children and adolescents. Each and every Safe Passage worker is making a difference in our students' lives. Thank you once again for every day for being the Safe Passage worker in our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Cardona. The chair recognizes Alderman Laspata.
Pleased and proud to stand and rise in regard to this resolution. I'm not sure if anyone in the box here today serves at either DeDiego Elementary School or at Clemente High School, but you are the reason that we see peace and stability at our schools. You are evidence that our communities have the talent and the capability to keep our communities safe. That is the work that you do and I'm so grateful for it every day and I'm so grateful to get to bear witness to it on the streets in the first ward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Laspata. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. The Safe Passage program has been intricate on the west side of Chicago. As, as a matter of fact, I, I will take some credit in kind of this modern iteration of it. The original iteration was where your neighbors sat on the porch as we walked down the street from one block to the next block to the next block until, until we got to school. But that, those times have changed in the community. And we had a group of men on the west side of Delano Elementary School from Saving Our Sons that actually took this concept and implemented it for no cost. And that bore today's modern version of the Safe Passage program, which was Watchful Eyes, as we called it in the West Garfield Park community. So I want to thank each and every one of you all for your, for your work and for the work that you do, as Alderman Harris said, through rain, sleet, snow, or whatever the weather conditions are outside, we can guarantee to see our Safe Passage workers on their post. So we appreciate the safety that you provide for our young people and for those that are traveling, doing those hours. It's not just for the kids going to school, but folks going to work, a lot of people that are moving around during that time. And so, we appreciate the work that you're doing, especially on the west side of Chicago. And we want you to continue in the success that you all have brought and provides a lot of, a lot of opportunity for people. But more, more importantly, it provides an extra layer of protection for our, our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to be associated with this resolution. When Safe Passage started on the far south side around Finger High School, one of our young adults that were attending school got killed. And out of that, Jadeen and I talked a lot regarding it, about Safe Passage, and I think I must have screamed bloody murder because I needed more, more and more, because our blocks were so long and the, the area that needed to have been watched. So I want to say, on behalf of those that live around Finger High School, as well as Julian, but for, for the most part around Finger, for the blocks that Safe Passage watched for our children, I want to commend you. Because since that incident, thank God, we have not had any more. It is not calm, but you all make it calmer than what it was. And for that, we are forever eternally grateful for Safe Passage around that one high school who was in dire need of you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I too rise in support of this resolution. Jason, you talk about the history on the west side. We all, we had, all had the people on the block and on the porch. But over in Robert Taylor Home, yeah, Robert Taylor Homes, they assembled a group of fathers and gang members to make sure that there was, number one, no gang activity when the kids went to school, and that, two, that the fathers were out there to make sure that their kids got to and from safely. And that was a program that was started by my mother, who was the principal there in the 1970s. So, we, we, it's important for us to recognize our history when we talk about moving forward. So when we came up with the idea of Safe Passage, I was really excited and, and, you know, I got to give all credit to my favorite resident Gregory Sane, one of my favorite fifth board residents. But to see the people in the community actually being a part of the community and being a part of ushering our babies to and from school, I look forward to seeing you all every morning outside my window because I'm a block away from O'Keefe Elementary School and it makes me feel safe and it makes me feel good. And the way that the children engage with you all is a wonderful thing because it's teaching them a valuable skill and it's calming them down before they go to school and calming them down on their way home. And so I just have, I have so much gratuity in my heart for the work that you all do. Like everybody has said, rain, sleet, snow, everything. Thank you for your work and we will continue to support you. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Hairston. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to, um, I too rise to support this resolution. You guys are heroes. This is not just a job, you actually save lives. I've worked with Jadeen many years and I want to thank you, Jadeen, for always being responsive and, and always talking about safety and security at all our schools. Keep up the good work and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to associate myself with this resolution. Back in 2009, when this program started, I was Director of Violence Prevention at In Las Chicago and brought this program into Little Village. In the subsequent year, as Executive Director of the organization, we did a data dump and we found that the presence of Safe Passage workers increased safety in our community right around the areas in which these Safe Passage workers were. And why does it work? It's individuals from our community, señoras and señores, that live within blocks of these schools, patrolling those neighbors and those neighborhoods, forgive me, in those blocks. And we know that our young people feel safer when they have positive adult engagement around them. That's why this program works. That's why we should double down on this program and continue to invest in this. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with people like Gregory Sane, that Alderwoman Hairston just mentioned, then also Jadeen Chow. It's been an absolute pleasure. People like Charles Sargent, back in the Little Village and North Lawndale community that I've worked with for years, are some of the best of us. And I'm glad that we continue to support this program, continue to count on me as a champion of this program, and continue to urge my colleagues and the rest of the various levels of government to support this very worthwhile program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I happened to be around when Safe Passage started. Once it closed to 50 schools, there were concerns over crossing gang territories and lines and even with Safe Passages having annual events celebrating you all, but I want to tell you that you're needed now more so than ever. I, I see you out there every day for the Safe Passage workers at War High School, those who are at Lewis Elementary School, putting themselves on the line. There's cars speeding up and down the street, trying to stop them just so their kids can cross the street. So, I want to thank you all for allowing yourself to be put in harm's way to protect the children. And that's, that's what I want to say to you. While you have to be observant as cars and some don't want to stop, as if they don't want to obey the police, then you don't have the, the vests and the bullets or the guns to, to fight back, but yet you put yourself on the line for children to be able to be safe. So, we want to say thank you. Thank you for your service each and every day. As my colleagues mentioned, you're out there on rain, shine, sleet, or slope, trying to make sure our children are crossing the street and even assisting them with not just street, other items that they may need or things that they don't have, or if they don't have the proper clothing or attire or something, or they need that, you, you report it to someone so that these children can get the help that they need. And just thank you for being observant, not just directing traffic for them, but also their whole body, mind, and soul as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to support this resolution. I want to commend all of you. You're here today on behalf of all the Safe Passage workers around the city of Chicago and all of you do incredible yeoman's work to make sure that kids can get to school safely. And I think as Alderwoman Mitz, just being that friendly face that they see on their way to school every day makes a big difference in, in their approach to going to school and making sure that they're safe at school. As we see violence around the country and also in Chicago, I think you, again, put your lives on the line and are out there and you make a huge difference for the kids that you're helping. So God bless you. I also want to recognize Jadeen Chow. She's an amazing, amazing person who's really put the safety of students first and foremost and does a great job working with all of us. So Jadeen, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. Any other members of the body wish to speak to this resolution? Let me just add a, a few additional words and highlight, I think, some points that have been made by others. Someone you just heard said this is not just a job. You know that. This is your life's work and the sacrifices that you make in all kinds of weather to be there for our kids and our families is beyond measure. It is such an incredible, incredible service to our city. Over the course of the last few years, we've talked a lot about making sure that we bring other stakeholders into the public safety fight, the fight that has to be fought literally block by block and a critical part- And a critical part of our strategy is making sure that we're engaging and supporting Safe Passage workers. So I want to thank you for that. This has been alluded to, but they are the village for our students and for our families. You see them every day. You know if things are okay, if things are not okay. You are the community alert to make sure that we are doing what we need to step up in service of our children and our families, and you play a critical role. I believe, as someone has said, that people who are closest to the problems and the challenges are closest to the solution. And there are many things over the years, and particularly recently, that you all have brought forward, suggestions that you've made based upon not only your lived experience, but your experience in being out there in the community that we have implemented because it just makes sense. So I am grateful for your service, and I will make sure that nothing is done to diminish your work and nothing is done to diminish the funding and support for the Safe Passage workers. You have my word on that. The other thing that I also want to add is Jadeen Chow. Folks, if you haven't had the opportunity to work with Jadeen, you are missing out. She is absolutely one of the greatest assets that we have in public service in our city, and I say that without exaggeration. She has a heart for the kids. She works tirelessly to make sure that she is thinking about innovative ways to engage, and particularly those children who are the most vulnerable, who are the ones that need us most, the ones that are disengaged and have the biggest challenges in their day-to-day life. So Jadeen, I just want to salute you and thank you for your incredible service to our All right. Our final resolution is in honor of Pride Month. And I'm happy to join my colleagues on the City Council and the LGBTQ community wearing our Pride Month stalls. I hope this will continue to be a tradition. In the box are Nancy Andrade, Commissioner of the Commission on Human Relations, Carla Rolls, a Chicago Police Officer, LGBTQ plus liaison officer, Zaya Sinabra, Chicago Police Officer, also LGBTQ plus liaison officer, Mike Milstein, a Chicago Police Deputy Director, Antonio King, Chicago Department of Public Health, John Van Slyke, Mayor's Office, Amy Black, Mayor's Office, and Juan Sebastian Ararias, also from the Mayor's Office. Are there any members of the body to which to speak to this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. We've come such a long ways from fighting for the rights of the LGBTQ community, but let's go back just a few years. In the 1980s, when I came out as a gay man, I came out at a time when you could be fired for being gay. Actually, I'd left the teaching profession because one of my colleagues was fired, and I knew it was just a matter of time I was going to be fired. When those of us went to the bars, we were sure to go to a bar with a large window in the restroom, so when the police raided it, we could escape through the windows. I'm a member of Dignity Chicago, and we had a card for members so that when they were arrested, they could call and have someone bail them out. And when they were arrested, their names were published in the papers, and then they were fired. I came out to my family on Pride Day, and I had a number of family members who refused to speak to me. When my mom died in 1994, I have seven brothers and sisters, and a number of them said they did not want me to bring my husband to the funeral because it would be too embarrassing for them. I told my family, I understand this is a horrible time for all of us to grieve if it was our last parent, but I said that if this is really concerning to you, I would encourage you not to come to the funeral because my husband's coming. We have come so far, and I still remember working with Alderman Tunny. I remember when it was announced that I could be married to my husband of 30 years now. And I had a reporter come up to me and said, "Oh, my gosh, marriage is now allowed. What else is left?" And I said, "Well, right now, we have members of the transgendered community who can't go to the bathroom." And I think they had that right. And Chairman Dowell worked hard to gather the votes needed so that members of the trans community could go to the bathroom. That's how, and that's just, that's recent. So we still have a long, long ways to go, but there is still so much to celebrate. And so I applaud these efforts. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Kappelman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Hadden.
I stand in to be associated with this resolution. Thank you for putting it forward, and thank you for the garb. I didn't know what I was going to wear today, so this makes up for it. I want to thank all of my colleagues for supporting this resolution and appreciate all of our different experiences. So to all of our public servants in the box, thank you all for showing up, for being out, for being proud, and for being role models for our community. I'll say that being of a different generation, my family's been, always been very supportive. Some of the struggles that my other colleagues or that older friends and members of the community have faced aren't things that I've faced, but there are always new struggles. There's discrimination. There's still a world that tells us that we're less than, that we have fewer rights. And increasingly, so many of the residents that I work with, especially our young people, are struggling with multiple identities at the intersection of being an LGBTQ person and being black, or being Latina, or being Asian, being a person of color, being a woman, being a trans person, being non-binary. There are so many complex layers of othering that our society can do, and especially when we sit at the intersection of those spaces, we can feel extra challenged. So I appreciate all of you and the work that you do for the city of Chicago and being a role model, and knowing that just our existence, being out, celebrating, and demonstrating how we're also just kind of normal people operating in the city of Chicago, it makes a huge difference to our youth. How I came out, what it was like being a lesbian woman in Chicago, was the main core subject of an interview that eighth-grade students at Eugene Field Elementary wanted to do for the third issue of their first-ever school newspaper, okay? They wanted to know. They wanted to know if I would support like a LGBTQ and ally support group at their school. And these are the questions that our young people have. They're constantly looking for support. They're looking for role models and people to tell them that it's okay, to give them that advice, and for people who've maybe gone through struggles that they haven't yet gone through to be able to reflect and give back. So I appreciate all that you do. Madam President, thank you for this resolution, and thank you to the entire City Council for celebrating with us.
Thank you, Alderman Hadden. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spada.
I'm very proud to stand in support of this resolution, so grateful and humbled for the stories that my colleagues share of their experiences. What you struggled through in your lives are something that if you're a cisgendered straight male like myself, you're just never going to fully understand. We can try to sympathize. We will never fully empathize. And so I'm grateful for your sharing. It makes me realize sometimes that it is a sad, scary thing for Chicago to feel more and more like an outpost of expression rather than the rule when we look around what is happening in this country, to say nothing of what so many folks are still experiencing every day in this city, particularly, I got to call out, like, as much as I never know if it is my space to call it out, the violence still being done to black trans women in this city, the violence that they experience every day, the threats that they experience every day, the violence that we think of some neighborhoods as being liberal progressive spaces, but when we see black trans women threatened for their lives in communities like Logan Square, we know just how far our city, our neighborhood, my ward, still have to go. But I am so grateful, Mayor, for your leadership, for our Council's leadership and humility and vulnerability, and that we're united in this fight and this work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution today, and I first want to thank all of the staff that came here today to also show support for our colleagues and people throughout the city of Chicago who, in some ways, face the discrimination and the intolerance that we're seeing explode across our country through violent rhetoric, as well as legislation that's being introduced in different parts of the country that are basically trying to turn back the clock on all those things that have been fought for over several decades. I in particular want to thank officers in the 14th and 19th District that I work with through the community meetings that we have, whether they're CAPS meetings or the DAC meetings or the district-wide discussions that we're having. It's great to see the officers who are really in support of not only the city laws, but what is right for all humans to feel safe in their communities, to be able to walk down the street and not be chided, not be attacked, both through physical and other types of emotional violence. And I think, so I want to thank all of you for all the efforts that you will continue to do to make this a city a safe place for everyone across the board. And I was thinking back to Alderman Kappelman's wedding. That was a great day, and I appreciate you inviting us at that time. I think it was, it was a moment in time when a lot of us realized, here is, here is something to be proud of, to support our colleague, and to see as that was changing minds and space, at least on the north side of the city and that, in that area that we were in. So I want to thank all of you for your continued efforts and wish you all the best as we move into Pride Weekend, and everyone have a safe and wonderful weekend. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Wagasback. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vazquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I also proudly rise in association with this resolution. It's a beautiful thing to see such a celebration of people being who they are and understanding that there was a time in our history where there was rebellious just to exist. To see this month, especially in Chicago, where it's celebration upon celebration, I feel very proud of our city and the movement that we've had as far as moving forward. I know many of us have grown and evolved and have learned through our siblings that have taught us so much, and when we think about those of us who are elected kind of as movement leaders, it is the LGBTQ movement that I think is really the largest of the coalitions because it cuts across so many different identities and brings us together in a way that I don't think a lot of other movements do. When we think about Stonewall riots and the origin of how we get to Pride, there's a lot to learn, not just about the celebration, but about the conviction and what it means to actually stand up for yourself, sometimes against authority, just to be allowed the opportunity to exist and love who you love. And so I am very proud to be here in this moment and to not only see how far we've come, but how much more we have to continue when we think about black trans lives and black trans women, and a lot of members of our community who still don't necessarily feel comfortable enough to live their authentic lives. So that we continue to do that work and continue to provide those opportunities, continue to uplift those who should be uplifted, to teach the rest of us what love really means, and have a month to do so is something I'm very happy to be a part of. So thank you so much for the opportunity, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Vazquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution to celebrate Pride Month, to send a hug to my LGBTQ siblings all across the city of Chicago in public service and outside of public service. It is such an important time to stand up for Pride, to stand up for the LGBTQ community. You know, the LGBTQ community has existed for time immemorial. It's been known by different names at different times and different places. In Oaxaca in southern Mexico, the indigenous culture had the Moche people, individuals who were born biologically as men but who lived as women and who were women, who exist through this day, the Moche people. In North America, the indigenous people had Two-Spirit individuals, individuals who we might know as trans or non-binary in our language today. What is clear is that LGBTQ people, like all people, are sacred, and that is why it's so beautiful that the symbol of the LGBTQ community is a rainbow flag, because it represents the diversity of our great human experience. So we know that LGBTQ people are natural. We know that same-sex attraction is natural. We know that trans people are natural because we have always existed. We've always existed all across the rich human experience, going back into before-recorded history. What isn't natural is the hatred against the LGBTQ community. That is what is manufactured. That is what is created by right-wing politicians, by right-wing policies that seek to push the LGBT community back into the closet. And unfortunately, as Alderman Wagasback and others have mentioned already, we see those bills coming up more and more in right-wing Republican-controlled legislatures. And so that is why this Pride Month is one of the most pride, important Pride Months in my lifetime, in our lifetimes, because it's time for us to say, "We are here, we are queer, get used to it. We are not going to go back into the closet. We are not going to let you strip us of our rights. We are going to love who we love. We are going to live our lives as our authentic selves, and we are going to live our lives with pride." And to those politicians who want to push us back into the closet, to those politicians who want to criminalize the act of being who you are and loving who you were born to love, shame on you. We're not going to allow it. In the city of Chicago, we are filled with pride. Our mayor, the first black lesbian mayor in the history of the city of Chicago, along with this council, along with elected officials in the state, and at every level of government, are going to stand up for what we know is correct, and that is to let people love who they want to love, to let people live their lives with pride. So I'm so glad that we're honoring our Pride Month in this assembly. Let's continue to fight. Let's continue to love, and let's continue to live authentically as who we are.
Thank you, Alderman Rosa, always elegant and particularly today. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Good morning again, Madam President and members of the City Council, and welcome to our guests who are here with us today. As I'm reading this, and I, you know, Alderman Rosa is definitely a tough act to follow when it comes to celebrating pride. You know, my, my heart is pained this month. It's pained because this should be a month of celebration. This should be a month of togetherness. This should be the month where, as my colleague said, you live your true self. But we know that the evolution of pride has gone from just being gays and lesbians to bisexuals, to trans, queer, intersexuals, and more, the giant plus at the end. Right now... Right now, this city, as we're on the cusp of celebrating the Pride Parade this weekend, and we've had a full week of Pride events throughout the city, we still have yet to answer for what is going on to the trans community in the city of Chicago. The National Black Justice Coalition said in the Chicagoland area, violence against anti-trans people is very much prevalent and growing. Earlier this year, organization Brave Space gave the city of Chicago an F in how we address trans violence. This is part of our community, these people are part of our city, and we are failing. LGBTQ must stand for more than just letters. It must be for our commitment to fully embrace and protect every member of our greater community, especially during Pride Month. For my colleagues, there are some names you need to remember. Breonna Hamilton, Desai Monae Smith, Tiara Banks, Tiana Alexander, Courtney Ashay Key. Those are still the five unresolved trans homicides from last year, with families and victims waiting for justice. We have failed them. And in this year already, Tatiana LaBelle and Elise Mallory, who was here in this building, in my office, speaking with many of you, we have failed her. So this pride, before all of the celebrations get raucous, let's not forget the entirety of that rainbow that we claim to be so proud to wave this month. Our trans brothers and sisters deserve better. This should not be the period where we look back and say, I remember those dark days, because we can fix those dark days. There are enough members of our community in government from top down to answer the call right now to protect this community, and yet we fail. So this pride, celebrate. This pride, lift those flags up and wave them, but this pride, don't forget the full scope of the community that makes up the LGBTQIA+ community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. It's rare that Alderman Lopez and I agree on something, and what he just stated was what I was going to state as well. As we talk about discrimination, as we talk about violence against LGBTQ members, it is those that are on the south and west sides that have had some severe challenges, especially in the 11th District as it relates to violence against transgender individuals. And during this time, I think we must take an opportunity not only to remember, but to do the actions that is necessary to bring those individuals to justice. So I appreciate the words of Alderman Lopez, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us to work toward helping members of the transgender community as it relates to violence and having our resources utilized to protect them, just as any other citizens in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Madam President, thank you for bringing forth this resolution. I want to also lend my support to this resolution and the progress that we've made in Chicago. I think of my colleague Alderman Tunney as the first openly gay alderman, and now I think 10% of the city council is part of the LGBTQ community, as well as you as the first mayor, as well as from all parts of the city, not just the north side of Chicago, as we have Alderman Lopez who's here representing his community. I also want to thank and recognize the members of my community in Edgewater, Andersonville, and Uptown, the small business owners, the teachers, the parents, who have made my neighborhood such a special place, and their contributions in the city of Chicago. As many have said, I think the rights that the LGBTQ community has seen are rights that need to be, continue to be fought for. As we see outside of Illinois, some of the hate that is being stoked, it's not too far for us to imagine what the future looks like if we don't stand up in unison against the hatred against the gay and lesbian community. So we have to be unified together to make sure that the rights that have been fought for and earned aren't rolled back, but it is a time to celebrate the progress that's been made and do so safely in this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to be associated with this resolution. I am the latest member of the LGBTQ caucus. I didn't get one of those beautiful thingies, but I, thank you. But Alderman Lopez is sharing it with me very proudly, standing here as another member of the caucus. Yes, we have a lot to celebrate, yes, we are here, yes, we are not going anywhere, and yet we also have to think about, as a city, how do we protect the people who are the most vulnerable? And I want to speak to the memory of a former student, Coco. She was a trans black student that I taught in Humboldt Park. Coco was found dead inside of a building a few years ago. And Coco was exposed to a lot of danger and harm because Coco was homeless, because her family kicked her out when she came out as trans. Coco had a lot of support from the community in the school that I used to work in, but there was a lot that she didn't have, and we failed to protect her because she didn't have safe housing, because she didn't have support, the support that she desperately needed, and she didn't have a family or a place to call home because she decided to live her authentic life, because she decided to say, this is who I am and this is who I am going to be, even if I have to put my life on the line in order to be able to be that, right? And I think that as we celebrate and as we assert our right to exist, we have to understand that in order for other people, in order for the most vulnerable to be able to assert their right to exist, we have to be able to create the structures of care for them to be able to do that. So as we, as we keep going on this Pride Month and the rest of our year and our budget season, I want us to keep that in mind as we legislate. How do we support the people who are most vulnerable and the people who need it the most? And trans people and LGBT people are at a very high risk, so we need to keep that in mind as we legislate. But happy Pride Month to everybody. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in support of the resolution that's presented before us today, and I have to tell you that I happened to make a mistake during my election time, and I won't ever forget this lesson because I share it all the time when it comes to the LGBTQ community. Many of us didn't grow up knowing the culture or what we were taught, that it wasn't so. What we wasn't taught was, people have a right to be who they want to be or what they choose to be in life. So during my campaign, I had a tired, frustrated campaign, something happened or said something, didn't know why I said it, but I got in trouble. I had to go back and apologize because I really wasn't trying to speak against anyone. But it became a big deal because you're in the election season. So I had my colleague Alderman Tunney, who came to me and stood up on my, I'm a, does not feel that way, because I had the whole LGBT community, not only in my ward, but across the city. And then I decided, well, let me learn because I really don't know. Nothing gave me a better sense of understanding than to have a group to come and sit down with myself and my community to share and to explain. And when they finished talking to me, I'm saying, I said to myself, well, we are depriving our community, our own families, from being who they choose to be or who they feel they need to be because of not being accepted, from the religious, from the family members, moms and dads. I have family members who are LGBTQ. I wouldn't dare go and say I don't like my family members. We may not understand, but that you should accept a person for who they are and let them be and enjoy them. And I have learned from that experience to open my arms to whoever, when they need something. In fact, I have a young lady who wants to open up in the ward, a resource center, so that she'll be able to help the young men. I hate the fact that if we push them out, they have nowhere to go. I heard those stories, those not, they would go to the north side, they're out on the streets, and that's not acceptable for anyone. Love your family members, embrace them, and allow them to live their life as a human being, just as we have been granted the privilege to live our life. So I am proud to be able to stand here today to see the celebration here in city council, but also the education and the knowledge need to continue to grow so others can understand, peoples can be able to worship, sit down at the table in their own house with their own families and not being pushed aside. So the information, I think, that need to be, continue to be spread and continue to lift up each and every one of you as we continue to work with our community to help them understand. So thank you all so much for allowing me to stand here and support Pride Month, because we are proud of the, where you come from, the steps and the journey. It always, it almost remind me of being enslaved, the battle that we are fighting, you're fighting it on a different front. And so thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. Any other members of the body wish to speak? Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Your Honor and ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to just say a word or two about this resolution, in addition to honoring those who are here representing the community, because in one of the whereas clauses, it states as follows, that thanks to those who have come before and fought for equality. And in truth, December 21st, 1988, could be described as a turning point in the Chicago LGBT history. That was the day that this city council adopted the Human Rights Ordinance. The vote was 28 to 17. It was a tough issue at the time, but the Windy City Times, which of course was the newspaper that led the charge for the adoption of that Human Rights Ordinance, referred to four people as the Gang of Four. And those four names should be inscribed in the history of what has been done here. They were Lori Ditman, Rick Garcia, Art Johnson, and John Henry Damski. They were tireless in their efforts to get the Human Rights Ordinance enacted. But two other names should also be listed in that honor roll. Mayor Gene Sawyer, who was the alderman at that time, the alderman and mayor at that time, and another alderman that I was proud to serve with, Kathy Osterman, who led the battle, swayed her colleagues to vote in favor of the Human Rights Ordinance. I remember what I said on that day. By the way, I was on the prevailing side, one of the 28. And as I urged my colleagues to vote in favor of that ordinance, I said, I am a faithful Catholic, and I'm a Vatican Knight. If I can vote for this ordinance, none of you have an excuse not to vote in favor of it. And so we did prevail, 28 to 17. And I think that indeed that was a turning point in Chicago history. Thank you, Madam President, for offering this resolution, and thank you, representatives who are here to join this morning, and honor those who have made a big difference down through the years in the history of human rights. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Burke, and thank you for that important note of history. The chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Thank you, Madam President, for bringing this resolution. As chair of the Progressive Caucus, whose priority it is to champion the most marginalized, I too stand with my LGBTQ+ brothers and sisters to uplift being your authentic self, and will fight with you to do so. I also want to uplift what Alderman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez said, that we need to make it a priority in our budget to support you, and I too will stand with you to do that as well. So thank you again, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman King. Chair recognizes Alderman Tunney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be brief. I want to thank my colleagues for all their support for 18, 19 years. I had my day of being, my day in sunshine back in '03 as the first openly gay alderman, and I echo what Alderwoman Scott has said. You know, the warmth, the support, the commonalities that we have as elected officials really rule the day. So thank you for all your respect and support over these many years, and specifically on a couple of items that I'm especially proud of, which is the Center on Halsted. Wouldn't happen without the funding of this council, I think it was '07. LGBT housing, I think the first in the Midwest here, connected to the Center on Halsted, which is the most synergistic combination of support, housing and services adjacent to each other, and then, of course, AIDS funding and all our budget priorities that really respect the LGBT community. And my only, the only thing that I think that probably hasn't been talked about today among my colleagues is, I never had a chance to be a parent, but I've got seven siblings and 100 employees, so I'm a daddy of sort. But I think there just needs to be a lot more support for families bringing children into this world, to let them, let the child be who they want to be. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez said, you know, that half of the runaway population are LGBT connected. It's because parents don't understand. They don't understand their own children, they love their children, but they don't understand. So I think a lot has changed, a lot more has to happen, because it's really unfair to put your kids out on the street. So we got more work to do, and I know the mayor will talk about, you know, the, what's happening in our judicial system at this point, but we need more to find commonality and to love each other and certainly love our children. So thanks, everyone, for their support in this resolution. Thanks. Thanks.
The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'll be brief, because I think the eloquence of the previous speaker and my other colleagues has been really impressive and of notes, and I'm so proud to serve with you all. It was this weekend where I stood with my community in the Manuel Perez Plaza in Little Village on 26th Street, a Veterans Plaza, where we celebrated Pride Month and our brothers and sisters from the LGBTQ plus community. And I just have to say that if it was only a couple of decades ago on a Veterans Plaza, we would have potentially been protested for that event. But not only were we not protested, we had members of the military there with us, members of all sectors of our community with us there. So I just rise to be associated with this resolution and to stand with my brothers and sisters who have spoken so eloquently previous to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? So ladies and gentlemen, I want to say a few words. Said a lot of words this month, and I'll say a lot more about where we are, where we've come, and why celebrating who we are and living our authentic lives are so important. We have come a long way, and I don't think we can underscore that enough. We started today's discussion of this resolution with Alderman Kaplman, a member of the community, and we're ending with Alderman Rodriguez, a clear and important ally. And all of the incredible words that have been said in between, I really think, speak to where we are, where we've come. I want to also acknowledge that I hope and I believe that members of the mayor's office and across a city government who are members of this incredible community feel a sense of pride and ability to live their authentic lives. I don't have a precise number, but I think probably 50% of the folks in the mayor's office identify as being part of our community, and I am incredibly grateful and proud, and I think there are equal numbers across city departments and sister agencies, and I am deeply honored and thankful for the folks that are here. Let me also note in particular, our CPD liaisons. I want to thank you for who you are and for stepping up. You know that it was not that long ago that a member of the Chicago Police Department openly identifying as gay or lesbian or trans would have been run out of town. In fact, you would have been too fearful to come out. And not only are you out, but you're serving and making sure that this department is responsive to the needs of our entire city and community. We owe you a debt of thanks and gratitude. And I also want to make sure the members of the body understand that these liaison officers for CPD are leading a national conversation around what police departments, big and small, can do to make sure that they are each more responsive to the needs of the LGBTQ plus community, particularly around attacks and violence against the trans community. So thank you, one and all, for being part of that discussion. I was struck by a comment that Alderman Vasquez said, which I believe is true, that it wasn't that long ago that coming out felt like an act of rebellion. I hope, frankly, now, it feels like an act of necessity. Because not living your true life, not being authentic in who you love and why you love them, not being authentic in the desire to marry and to have children and have a family and be part of a community does deep, deep harm. So we have come a long way, but we all recognize that we also have many miles to go in our journey. We have to do more to support our trans brothers and sisters. We have to do more to make sure that our young people, if their families are not accepting, that we open up our arms to them and they find a place in our community that is not on the streets. That is an absolute necessity. And we have to make sure that we continue to fight against all forms of hate, not just against our community. As someone who straddles many communities, I firmly believe that hate against one is hate against the other, and we all have to be united as brothers and sisters to repel any hate. And it makes me happy in some ways that Chicago is a beacon of hope, a place where we stand for justice for all, but it also makes me sad that increasingly, what we see across the country is that we are isolated and becoming an island because there's so much hate that's being propagated elsewhere. We also need to make sure that we continue to support and salute our community-based organizations who, every single day, are doing the Lord's work, whether it's in healthcare, whether it's reaching out to trans youth, whether it's in housing. We need to make sure that these communities, north, south, east, and west, continue to be strong and vibrant, and the city council has, and I hope will continue to, make sure that we provide resources and funding for those communities and for those organizations to be able to reach those who are most vulnerable. Last thing I'll say is this. As we stand here reflecting on where we are, pride in who we are, and where we're going, we have to be mindful of what's going to happen when the Supreme Court renders its decision invalidating Roe v. Wade. This is not a decision that will just reverse a woman's right to autonomy over her body, which is critically important and something that we must never, ever, ever shy away from fighting that fight. As you know, many of the rights that this LGBTQ plus community depends upon, the laws that have been passed across our country, and frankly, the Supreme Court precedent itself stems from the right of privacy found in Roe. So I stand here concerned, concerned about my right and my marriage. I stand here concerned about what the future is for my child, who is part of a same-gender family. I feel concerned about our democracy and what that's going to mean for all of us. But I also remain, as I always try to be, optimistic. As somebody said to me last night at our official event, we've faced hard challenges before. We've fought hard battles before. So we must look at this impending decision of Roe not as a war lost, but as a battle on a journey to make sure that the arc of justice, the arc of justice does bend, sorry, the arc of freedom does bend for justice. We have many more miles to walk in our journey, and we have to face that reality with passion, with conviction, but also together. So when we unite together as a city, as a state, as a country, there's no hurdle that we can't overcome. I hope we take that into our heart. I hope we believe that to be true, and we will fight back against the hate. We will fight back against the laws that try to deprive us of the full rights of citizenship. We won't let that happen, but we're going to need all of us, all of you, to be on this journey with us. I'm ready for the fight. I think you are too. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here. Thank you, and happy pride, everyone.[1115.58][1115.58] All right. It may seem like we've been here all day, but I think we have some work that we need to attend to. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for passage of the resolutions?
Madam President, I move passage of these resolutions in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move that we return to regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Madam Clerk, next up on the agenda is Communications.
Communications from our Honors to the Mayor to the Honorable, the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner, a planning and development I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreements. The Chicago Board of Education to provide tip funding for various improvements of public schools. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner, planning and development I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the execution of tax increment financing development agreements with various entities. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commissioner, request of Commissioner, housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing an increase of the amount of multifamily housing mortgage revenue bonds to issued for Roosevelt Square 3B Development Project. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner, planning and development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing an amendment of the canal slash Congress, Congress tax increment financing redevelopment plan and project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner, housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing issuance of various financial assistance to the Auburn Gresham Apartment Development Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner, housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxes and housing revenue bonds for the acquisition of construction of the residential portion of the Austin United Alliance Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner, housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of various financial assistance for the acquisition of rehabilitation the Barbara Jean Wright Apartments. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, I transmit here with a fund 925 amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner, planning and development I transmit here with ordinances authorizing a favorable tax status for specified properties located in the city. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner, assets, information, services, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the execution of lease agreements with various entities. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner, housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of various financial assistance to Sarah's on Lakeside LLC for a new affordable housing development project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner, housing I transmit here with an ordinance creating the South Shore Condo Preservation Pilot Program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request the Commissioner, planning and development I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned property. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with, together with Alderman Burnett, Hadden Rodriguez, an ordinance amending the Chicago zoning ordinance requiring equitable trans-oriented developments. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I request the Commissioner, buildings, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code to adopt a new energy conservation mode. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I've appointed Angela D. Brooks as a member of the Zoning Court of Appeals for a term effective immediately and expiring July 1st, 2025, to complete an unexpired term of Jolene N. Saul, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following documents filed in my office relating to respective subjects as designated as follows. Funding loan notification of City of Chicago multifamily housing revenue note series 2022A and 2022B Lake Park Crescent Apartments. After the Office of the Inspector General's Year 2021 Annual Public Safety Section Report. Office of an Inspector General's Report on Fairness, Inconsistency, and Disciplinary Process for Chicago Police Department Members. Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to Metropolitan Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for year ended December 31st, 2021. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on May 23rd, 2022, when required by statute, to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on June 22nd, 2022, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings, City Council, City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on May 25th, 2022, required by statute, were published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, which were published in pamphlet form on June 22nd, 2022, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings, City Council, City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council that the call for the special meeting and the matters considered by the City Council on May 25th, 2022, were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on June 22nd, 2022, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings, City Council, City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that the ordinance approving various concession license agreements at Chicago O'Hare International Airport, which were passed by the City Council and appeared in the Journal of Proceedings, September 14th, 2021, was also printed in full text as an addendum publication on June 15th, 2022. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas, which refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Claims against the City of Chicago, which refer to the Committee on Finance. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of Paseo Boricua Gateway Flags on West Division Street at Northway, Artisan Avenue and North Mozart Street as Chicago Landmark, which refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Recommendation of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of Monumental Baptist Church at 729 East Oakwood Boulevard as Chicago Landmark, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Amendment of Municipal Code Section 356050 regarding a No Fee Veteran City sticker, which refer to the Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety. Submission of referendum question to Chicago voters regarding mayoral term limit, which is referred to Committee on Committee and Rules. Correction of January 26th, 2022, City Council Journal of Proceedings, which referred to Committee on Committee and Rules. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, the committee reports. Chairman Wegasback, the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met virtually on June 16th and reconvened on June 21st, 2022, item one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance amending sections of the Municipal Code Titles Two and Three regarding death benefits available to first responders in the event of suicide. I know that Alderman O'Shea wishes to speak on this item before I move to have a roll call vote.
All right.
And I would like to comment as well, if I could.
The chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, what we have before us today is a modest death benefit for the families, the surviving spouses of our first responders who died by suicide. Now, we know that they face an enormous burden, financial and an emotional hardship, as they attempt to pick up the pieces. What in most cases is the shock of their life. We've seen it over and over. Where the surviving members of the family, the friends, the colleagues, had no idea of the burden, our firefighters. had no idea of the burden our firefighters, paramedics, and police officers have experienced in their daily lives. We've got to do more to remove the stigma. The stigma that I can reach out and ask for help. That is not weakness. Suicide was the second-leading cause of death to law enforcement officers last year, only to COVID. What they experienced day in and day out, pulling up to the scene of a horrific shooting, pulling up to the scene of a horrible fire. The violence, the tragedy, the unbelievable grief, the death, each and every shift of what they see. What do they do? They turn to alcohol, they turn to substance abuse, they bottle it up. You can't acknowledge what you've experienced. You can't ask for help because in our society, that's not okay. We have failed them. We continue to fail them. All 50 members of this body sign onto this ordinance, and for that, I thank you because we all recognize that we have failed. I'd like to acknowledge Chairman Waguespack. I'd like to acknowledge Ann Emerson, a fierce, tireless advocate on this topic. I'd like to recognize Stacey Escamillo, Julie Trolia, Patrick Collins, who brought this to me and said, "You need to do something." Alexa James, Inami, Chicago, who continue to advocate. This is a modest death benefit, helping these families to pick up the pieces and give them some time to figure out what they're going to do moving forward. We're in the process of hiring more mental health professionals to assist our first responders. As of today, do you know how many we've hired? One. Now, like a lot of things, no one wants to be a police officer, no one wants to be a We've got to do more. I often think of Dionne Boyd. Dionne Boyd was a 29-year veteran in the Chicago Police Department, gave his entire career working in some of the toughest neighborhoods, trying to connect with our wayward youth. He was promoted to Deputy Chief of the Chicago Police Department, the pinnacle, something that all our officers achieved to be. 13 days later, Deputy Chief Dionne Boyd died by suicide. This is a big step today. Thank you all for your leadership. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Farrow.
Madam President, I too rise to speak with regard to this ordinance that's before the body today, and I want to sincerely thank my colleague, Alderman O'Shea, for his hard work in making sure that we bring this to vote. And I want to thank you sincerely, Matt, for taking the helm on this because it's truly Madam President, as you know, and as many of you know, the police officer see the worst of the worst every single day, and many of them don't have an outlet other than one another in many cases. And I want to thank you, Madam President, for just the attention that you've brought to mental health in our first responders and treating our first responders that are suffering from mental health issues. But this goes beyond even the mental health issues that are prevalent on our police department and on our fire department. It really goes to the families and the difficulties that they are faced with once they lose a loved one to suicide, how it's difficult for them to carry on, not only from an emotional perspective, but it's difficult for them to carry on from a financial perspective as well. And I want to say that I've had an opportunity to speak to some of the same folks that Alderman O'Shea has spoken with, and they're hurting, and they want us to take action. And so I want to thank you for pushing this, Matt, I really appreciate it because these families need our support at this time as they deal with the loss of a loved one. That's very tragic in almost every instance, in every circumstance. We give them, and this city will give them, at least some sort of relief to take the burden of, the financial burden off of their shoulders. So again, Matt, I thank you so much for this ordinance. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. And now, good afternoon, members of the City Council. I too rise in support of this ordinance, and I want to thank Alderman O'Shea for spearheading this and for Chairman Scott Waguespack for allowing this to be heard. This is more than just about stigma, though. It's more than just about what our officers see. We are driving our officers to this point. When you have a department who says on its website, "The mental health and wellness of our department members will remain a top priority," and yet you work them two, three weeks straight without a chance to decompress, without a chance to be with their families, without a chance for them to live a normal human life, we are driving them to that. That is a failure of leadership. That is a failure to manage the human capital that is the police officers themselves. I have spoken with many officers throughout this city. They are beaten down, they are tired, their families, many of them who are married to other officers are in shambles, their children are growing up without them. We are doing that. Our policies are having an absolutely horrible effect on those brave men and women who we call heroes when we need them. That, ladies and gentlemen, must come to an end. The part that we must own is the part that we contribute to the decline of our officers' mental health and well-being, what government is doing to them. We all know and understand where we're at with the exodus of officers. We all know and understand how difficult it is to recruit, but we also know that with all of those facts presented, we have to do something different. Because clearly, it's causing people to question and make that ultimate decision from which there is no coming back from. We have to recognize that part of the equation, too. This is a good step, but if we can prevent people from having to feel as if they are out of options, that life has lost its meaning, then we should also pursue that as well, both in how we talk about officers, as well as how we manage them as the crucial workers that they are to protecting the great city of Chicago. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Spizato.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this. Matt, I want to thank you for spearheading this and thinking of it. This is some things we never think of as a first responder myself, along with Chris, Jim, Anthony, and we saw some bad stuff that bothered us. You know, my brother was affected really bad with PTSD from an incident, and I think Anthony might have been with him, a little neighborhood thing where a mother beat her child to death, and they had to witness that and see that. So, you know, we've seen some bad stuff in our time, and it affects everybody differently. So, this is a benefit, though, like Matt said, it's very minimal, and I hope and pray that it's a benefit that we never, ever use. That's what we're all hoping for, and I just want to tell Matt I appreciate all he did, and sometimes, none of us really understand what people are going through sometimes with PTSD or suicide, but in the event, at least it'll help the family not to be a family destroyed. And once again, hopefully, it's something we never use, but thank you very much, Madam President, I appreciate everything.
Thank you, Alderman Spizato. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this to Chairman O'Shea. This is a terrific, terrific thing that you're doing. I was there with Alderman Spizato's brother. What police and fire see, not just police and fire, I think all city workers and just us as a city right now, what we see every day, day in and out, is life-changing for all of us, and I think we all kind of suffer from our own type of stress or post-traumatic effects to us. I think this is a great step in the right direction towards helping our first responders. I know I have things that I'll never forget, but on that behalf and that win in here today, I hope tomorrow's push is for the stress we're putting on our first responders in general. 11 to 23 days straight working, we have to find a way out of this because, like my colleague Alderman Lopez has mentioned, it's suffering in the families as well. So, we're not just seeing the suicide rate climb on our officers and our firefighters and our paramedics and our first responders, we're seeing it in the families that are affected by not being with their loved ones and missing out on growing up with their mothers and fathers who are constantly working. 11 to 23 days straight. Today's success is a great one, but we have to work for another success tomorrow and working on not canceling days off every day, every week, every month. I know it's difficult because it's all based on the strength of our force and what we have to put on the streets, but we got to find a way around this. Our turnover rate in the next year, our retirement rate, our lateral move rate, and our just straight-out quitting the job or not taking the job is going to explode by the end of the year. And today or yesterday's the first day of summer, you're going to see this explode in the next couple of weeks. So, terrific job. I don't mean to take away from the terrific job you did on this, Chairman O'Shea and Chairman Waguespack. I support this wholeheartedly, and thank you for supporting this as well, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Napolitano. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I was thinking how this plays out in other places in the military, for example, which I served. The fact that benefits when there's a suicide, benefits that are transferred those to those families so that they can live a dignified life, especially the families that are left with, you know, such a tragic incident. And I wonder, police being sort of in the same way, similar situations where in certain parts of our communities, it's very difficult where they serve and the hours that they put in, along with the back and forth that goes on with dealing with crime and dealing with incidents of rioting and things that we've witnessed over the last few years, it begs the question, I think, this is a long time coming, we need to do more, and I wonder, there'll be a time where suicide, in certain cases, ought to be covered as a line of duty death. And this, I was asking Matt what this does, and I think it gets us there, and I think we need to do more in studying that so that folks that serve here and protect us and their families are protected and can live a dignified manner after such a tragic loss. And so I just want to add to that, I support this wholeheartedly, and I support Matt O'Shea in this endeavor. Of course, a lot of us did the same thing, but we got to think a little bit beyond that in terms of what's causing it and do the right thing and protect families as well, and look at it, is this really a line of duty death based on the circumstances, based on what happened and what's causing it? It is a norm nowadays in our society, so many pressures that are against us, and we're seeing it across not just in police, but some other professions. But thank you, Matt, now let's look a little deeper in what that means from a longer perspective, and let's look at line of duty death. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. Are there any other members I wish to speak to this matter? Chairman, if I may, just briefly, I too want to join in thanking Alderman O'Shea for bringing forward this ordinance. It wasn't that long ago, folks, that this department didn't recognize members who committed suicide. It's been in the last three years, I think, that we've started to understand and acknowledge publicly the stresses on police officers, but also other first responders. Many of you said it, they see society at its worst every single day. The stress is real, the trauma is real, which is precisely why Superintendent Brown came to me last summer and said, "We've got to step up and do more," and this council approved a $20 million increase specific to officer wellness. And we just recently opened up a family facility on the South Side with several more to come. And yes, we will make sure that we get the staffing, and I think it's there, and the facilities that we opened, but keep in mind, for years and years and years and years, there were three clinicians to help our officers, three, and the change has come to make sure that there's somebody in every district just in the last budget cycle. The stigma is an issue because too many officers believe the urban myth that if they seek help, that their Ford cards will be taken from them, which is not true. And so we do have to fight through that stigma, just as we have to fight through stigma in general when it comes to people accessing mental health resources, and we continue, led by our great Department of Public Health, to work on destigmatizing this crisis so that people get the help that they need. In addition to the folks that Alderman O'Shea thanked, I also want to thank Susie Park, our Budget Director, who worked hand and glove with the Alderman to make sure that we came up with a proposal that met the needs, but did it within our fiscal constraints. I also want to thank my Chief of Staff, Sybil Madison, who was also at the table, to make sure that we address this issue and prioritize it. But again, thank you all, this is an important step for these families who, as you've heard, are not only shocked, but they don't need to be financially bereft as well. I think this is an important step in the right direction. Turn it back to you, Chairman Waguespack.
Thank you, Madam President. If I could as well, today's amendment to this fund serves to include an overlooked portion of fallen first responders and their families, and inclusion of this qualifying suicides is a measure that brings us closer in line with all the contract, probate, labor, and case law, acknowledging that death by suicide cannot be disregarded by the law because of the stigma, shame, and challenges of injuries that are not always visible to the naked eye. So acknowledging this today... So, acknowledging this today, that some lines of work, especially in police and fire and first responders, puts people at a greater risk of self-harm through this physical and mental trauma, and I'm glad we're recognizing it today. All of us have been impacted in some way by suicide or mental illness, whether through family or friends. So, I think this is a time to say in a quiet yet loud way to shore up each other's resolve around this issue, work together, promote the dialogue and communication that we need to really get the treatment to people that need it before we get to situations like this. So, I want to thank the same people from budget, fire, police, all of the 50 Aldermen who contributed. As I stated, we're talking about many different areas of the law, and as we went through this, we realized that there are even significant portions of other jurisdictions that we had to look at, at state and federal level, to really make this thing, this ordinance, work. So, I know it was a bit of a slog, Alderman O'Shea, but we got to a point where I think we have a very good ordinance, and I'm proud to say, you know, having 50 Aldermen and the administration working together to get to this point today is a very important step forward. And I also want to thank the advocacy group, NAMI, for the great work that they always do for all of our officers, for all of us, through all of the organizations that they collaborate with and the departments in our city. To have an organization like that helping us out speaks volumes to, I think, the work that they do as well. So, thank each one of you for your support on this item. And with that, Madam Chairman, I would call for a roll call vote on this as well so that Alderman Scott can cast her first vote in the City Council, in particular, on this item.
Madam Clerk, please open the voting.
The voting is now open. Please hit Refresh and cast your vote, and raise your hand if you have any issues. Please hit Refresh and cast your vote. Alderman Scott, I will take you as a voice vote. Yes, Alderman Scott is a yes. She's doing it now. The vote is now closed.
The yeas are 48, the nays are zero, the motion passes. Alderman Kaplanman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Waguesback, back to you.
Madam President, moving on to item number two. This is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance amending Municipal Code Section 3-56-041 concerning reduced-term wheel tax licenses. If there is no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Okay. Madam President, item three is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance amending Municipal Code Chapters 9-100 and 9-101 to further regulate the automated speed enforcement On this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
But before that, just a couple of things I want to speak on in relation to this particular ordinance. So, number one, after yesterday's debate on this, there are two things that are very clear. Based on the data that was presented, we know and understand that speed is not our friend in a car or outside of a car. We just saw yesterday the foot pursuit policy for the Police Department. We can't chase anybody on foot, can't chase anybody in the car, and now we want to say that we cannot enforce the speeding at a level that is appropriate and commensurate to individuals losing their lives. As we said, speed kills. Alderman Scott may speak to a young child that last week was killed by a hit-and-run driver on 16th Street. Today, we just honor folks from safe passage, but in another breath, want to take the funding away that supports them. Again, we just talked about helping members of the Chicago Police Department, and in another breath, wants to take away the funding that supports them. This is, I know this is a unique and challenging issue, but it's on us as members of council to lead, and leading may sometimes mean doing something that is not popular. Of course, nobody wants to be caught in violation of the law, but again, with all that is happening in many of our communities, I think this is not the proper step to take. And more importantly, I don't think it's a proper step for us to take on today. So, Alderman, Waguesback, Spazato, Burnett, Curtis, Harris, Laspada, and I move to defer and publish.
The matter will be deferred and published.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. My point is that this item has already been deferred and published once, and you cannot defer and publish an item twice. We are regulated by home rule, and there's nothing in our rules and regs and our bylaws that state that you can defer and publish an item twice.
Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
I wish to disagree with the gentleman from the Ninth Ward. This item was deferred and published out of a different committee. Under state law, an item coming out of a committee can be deferred and published under state law. So, the matter of it coming from one committee to the other is irrelevant in the conversation, even though the item had been deferred and published out of rules. This item is coming out of Finance Committee at this point, and is subject to being deferred and published under state law.
If I may, Alderman, my recollection is that your original ordinance was deferred and published. What we're talking about today is a committee report, which is a different item, and it is, it can be deferred and published, as you know, that happens all the time. The matter is deferred and published. Chairman Waguesback, please proceed.
We defer, Madam President, we defer and publish items.
Can you please turn on his microphone? Thank you.
This item was deferred and published as an individual item, not as a committee report, and you cannot, based on our laws, defer and publish an item twice. And so, therefore, I respectfully appeal the ruling of the Chair by a roll call vote.
Alderman Beal? DMPs are not appealable, sir.
I am appealing the ruling of the Chair, Madam President.
DMPs are not appealable. Alderman Waguesback, please continue on.
Because you can.
Alderman Waguesback, sir, sir, DMPs are not debatable. They are not appealable. That is clearly what our rules state. And that's, no, no, sir. It's interesting that every time you are wrong, you challenge everything. We are not making them up. Pursuant to 65, pursuant to 65 IOCF, 5/3.1 dash, sir, please, section 3.1-40-35 entitled "Deferral of Committee Reports." Upon the request of two Alderpersons present, any report of a committee of the council shall be, sir, please, I would appreciate.
Have paper regarding that report?
No, that's not what the rules are, sir. I think we've debated this long enough. Sir, please continue on.
Madam President, item number four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with WHP-2D LLC, WHP-2D Manager LLC, Brinshore Place LLC, and Michael's Chicago Holding Company, too, to provide lending, tax use covenants, and tax increment financing funds for development of West Haven Park 2D residential housing located at 145 North Damon Avenue and 1951 to 1959 West Lake Street in the 27th Ward. If there's no one that wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report corresponding, oh, excuse me, Alderman Burnett wishes to speak on this item. Pardon me, Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, keep your, hold on, Alderman Burnett. Can we please, out of respect for the Aldermen, keep our voices down?
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to apologize, Mr. Chairman. During the committee meeting, I had some problems with my computer, and I was present, but something was wrong, and I wasn't able to say anything about this item at the committee meeting. I just want to thank and commend the Mayor's Office and the Department of Housing by allowing us to pursue this. This is one of the transformation areas of public housing of Henry Horner in the 27th Ward, and this would be, this money is going toward the last part of this, and this would complete that area in development. So, I think it's something to be celebrated that has been going on for over 20 years. And so, I commend the administration and everybody who's working on this to allow us to get this money, to make this happen, and complete this transformation of public housing. So, I just want to say thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. Alderman Waguesback.
Madam President, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds to C40 Preservation Associates Limited Partnership for construction of affordable housing located at 209 South Kedzie Avenue and 3137 to 3157 West Fifth Avenue in the 28th Ward. If there is no one that wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President.
Oh. I'm sorry. Alderman Lopez, do you wish to speak on this matter?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Alderman Beal and I move to defer and publish this item.
Madam President.
Back to you all, Chairman.
Item number six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to issue affordable housing bonds to Greater Southwest Development Corporation for the construction of affordable supportive living facility Churchview located at 2626 West 63rd Street, located in the 16th Ward. Unless the Alderman wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to amend the master intergovernmental agreement with the Public Building Commission of Chicago regarding use of tax increment financing funds for various projects. If there is no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Me and Alderman Lopez wish to defer and publish.
So, just so we're clear, and maybe we can save some time. Are you guys going to play this game on every item that comes out of Finance and defer and publish?
Yep.
All right. So, Chairman.
Item number eight?
Yes, please.
All right. Madam President, item number eight is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of $1,983,0938 for infrastructure repairs to the 43rd Street Green Line Station located in the Third Ward. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Alderman Lopez, are you and Alderman Beal wishing to defer and publish this matter as well? It will be deferred and published. I'm sure your colleagues thank you.
Madam President, item nine is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the CTA to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of $21,560,000 for much-needed infrastructure repairs to the Blue Line Forest Park branch between Damon and Ashland in the 25th, 27th, and 28th wards. If there's no one wishing to speak on the item, I move passage by.
Games continue, Alderman Lopez and Alderman Beal.
Madam, thank you. Madam President, minus the commentary, Alderman Beal and I do move to defer and publish this item.
It shall be deferred and published. The games continue, Chairman Waguesback.
All right. Madam President, item 10 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of $5,670,000 for infrastructure repairs to the California Blue Line Station located in the First Ward. I thought Alderman Laspada was going to speak on this item, but since no one wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
I wish to defer and publish this item with Alderman Lopez.
The item will be deferred and published?
Madam President, item 11 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of $8 million for infrastructure repairs to the Western Brown Line Station located in the 47th Ward. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee. Can you please turn on her?
Hello? Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to be recognized for the roll call vote I missed earlier.
The first item.
The first, you want to be.
Thank you. It's the first time I'm doing this. What do I need to say?
You want to be recorded.
The first item.
You want to be recorded as a yes on the first item?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Sorry about that.
So reflected. The Chair recognizes Alderman Malanato. The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
I'd like to be recorded as voting yes on the first item of the finance agenda, please.
The record will be so reflect. Any other? I see you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Madam President, Alderman Beal and I move to defer and publish this item.
Publish.
Madam President, item number 12, a communication recommending a proposed ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for the Cicero Stevenson Redevelopment Project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Financing Act. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Madam President, me and Alderman Lopez wish to defer and publish this item.
The item will be deferred and published.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 13 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance designating the Cicero Stevenson Redevelopment Project area as a redevelopment project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Financing Act. If there's no one wishing to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez. Can you turn on his microphone, please?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to be recorded as thoroughly embarrassed and ask our colleagues to cease and desist. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Alderman Vasquez. Could you repeat that? I don't think people heard you.
Sure. I'd like to be recorded as thoroughly embarrassed and would ask our colleagues to cease and desist so we can continue proceedings. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
We don't have a thoroughly embarrassed button. Madam President...
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Pardon me. Item 14?
Yes, please.
Item 14 is a communication recommending the adoption of tax increment financing for Cicero Stevenson Redevelopment Project area. If there's no one wishing to speak on this particular TIF item, I move passage by first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
President, Alderman Beal and I move to defer and publish this item.
The matter will be deferred and published.
Madam President, item 15 is the report of cases in which judgments or settlements were entered into for the month of May 2022, which will be placed on file with the clerk.
So reflected.
Item 16 is an order authorizing two charitable solicitation tag day permits for the American Civil Liberties Union and Save the Children, both citywide, and both to run July 1st through December 31st, 2022. Unless there's another objection, I ask that this item be placed in the omnibus.
You want to object to the tag days, gentlemen? Alderman Beal? The item will be placed in the omnibus.
Madam President, items 17 and 18 are authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and the denial of payment of various small claims against the city. Unless there's another objection, I ask these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And, Madam President, that concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Wegasback. Pardon me? No, I don't. All right. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting, and members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a committee meeting and a subcommittee meeting on the Chicago Recovery Plan on June 15, 2022. The committee recommends passage of the following item. Number one, a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the Annual Appropriation Ordinance year 2022 within Fund Number 925 for the Office of Budgeted Management, the Department of Housing, the Department of Public Health, the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities, and the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The Subcommittee on the Chicago Recovery Plan also met this month on June 15th for a subject matter hearing to discuss small business and workforce support and assistance to families. No votes were taken. This concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, Chairman Villegas. Folks, can you please limit your conversations, given that we're doing city business? Thank you. Chairman Villegas.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. The committee held a virtual meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items one through six are a series of reappointments and one appointment to the various special service areas collectively voted on by the committee members introduced by Mayor Lightfoot during May 23rd, 2022 City Council meeting. Reappointment of Bonnie Donnell Dimon to SSA Number Five Commercial Avenue Commission located in 7th and 10th Wards. Reappointment of Jack Robolsky to SSA Number 28 dash 2014 Six Corners Commission located in the 45th Ward. Reappointments of Diane Carley and Jose Barrera to SSA Number 39 Brighton Park Archer Heights Commission located in the 12th, 14th, and 15th Wards. Reappointment of Dallas Gordon Jr. to SSA Number 45 103th Halsted Commission located in the 34th Ward. And the appointment of Jesse Eisner Calle to SSA Number 19 Howard Street Commission located in the 49th Ward. I move for passage of this reappointments and appointment by the first favorable roll call vote, Committee on Finance, and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 6701 West Forest Preserve Drive, 4350 North Normandy Avenue in the 30th Ward. I move for passage of this item by the same role, by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eight is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive renewal for property located at 2700 West Roosevelt Road in the 28th Ward. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item nine is an ordinance in support of a Class 7C tax incentive for property located at 4710 North Ravenswood Avenue in the 47th Ward introduced by Mayor Lightfoot. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 10 is a substitute ordinance, ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 2017 North Mendel Street in the 2nd Ward. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Rebals.
We seldom use in council. My colleagues Harrison Austin joined me in defer and publish this item.
The item shall be deferred and published.
Thank you, Madam President.
President...
Please continue, Chairman Villegas.
Yep. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Villegas. Next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. Try to get through this without any DMPs, but I'll keep my fingers crossed. Reporting for your committee on housing and real estate, which had a committee on June 13th, 2022, the committee has a series of recommendations, including the passage of the following. Item number one calls for the hearing on the deaths that occurred at the James Schneider Apartments located in the 49th Ward at 7450 North Rogers. I move passage of this item with the first favorable roll call, the Committee on Finance, and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is a negotiated sale of city vacant, vacant city-owned property at 1433 South Kedzie to GMO Properties LLC. Property is sold as is and may require environmental remediation from the perpetrator. This is in the 24th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is the sale of city-owned property at 1254 South Albany Avenue to Natasha Scott. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is the sale of city-owned property as is at 1256 South Albany Avenue as open face, space for Natasha Scott, to Natasha Scott in the 24th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is a negotiated sale of vacant city-owned property at 5384 South Bowmanville to Neighbor Space for the expansion of Bowmanville Community Managed Garden. I make the same motion if there's no objection, with the exception of a no vote by Alderman Maldonado.
Can you turn our microphone on, please? Please proceed, Alderwoman Scott.
I recuse myself from the properties of 1254 and 1256 South Albany Avenue. I don't benefit from those properties.
Your Rule 14 recusal... Your Rule 14 recusal will be noted for the record out of an abundance of caution. Chairman Osterman, please proceed.
And that was on item three and item four. Going to, back to item number five. Item number five is a negotiated sale of vacant city-owned property at 5384 North Bowmanville Avenue to Neighbor Space for the expansion of a Bowmanville Community Managed Garden. I make the same motion if there's no objection, with the exception of a no vote by Alderman
So noted. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Scott.
To the item three and four, due to a conflict of interest with a family member on items three and floor, three and four, I want to recuse myself from those items.
I think we already noted those for the record, but thank you for your clarification.
Under Rule 14. Thank you, guys.
I think we already noted those. Thank you.
Moving on to item number six. Item number six, the negotiated sale of city-owned as-is property at 1130 North Monticello to Neighbor Space for the development of open space. I make the same motion if there's no objection, with the exception of a no vote by Alderman Maldonado.
With the no vote noted, hearing no further objection.
Thank you. Item seven is a negotiated sale of city-owned property at 912 South California to 914 South California LLC. The property may need environmental remediation costs. This is in the 28th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is a negotiated sale of city-owned property at 1318 South Kilborn, 1318 South Kilborn Ave, partial, and 1256 South Kilborn to Industrial Fence Inc. to be used for parking in his material storage yard in the 24th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is a negotiated sale of city-owned property at 4214 South Fifth Avenue to Levon Williams. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 10 is a loan forgiveness agreement with the Center on Halsted Project at 3628 dash 56 South Halsted in the 44th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection. Madam President, this concludes my report.
Chairman Osterman, just as a point of clarification, on item nine, did you mean to identify the property at 4214 West Fifth Avenue?
I believe I did, but I will...
And then also as to item 10, did you mean the Center on Halsted at 3628 dash 56 North Halsted?
Yes.
All right. Thank you with those clarifications. No objections, so ordered. Does that conclude your report, sir?
Concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a virtual meeting on June 16th, 2022, and the following items were passed by the committee. Item number 02022 dash 1627, a substitute ordinance to amend the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding a special condition for Navy pure license, liquor license in the 42nd Ward. I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 2, 02022 dash 1628, an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding hours of operation for outdoor pedos in the Central Business District in the 42nd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
We had three ordinances regarding moratoriums in the 26th, 35th, and 47th Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Metz. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Chair, excuse me, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, June 16th, 2022. Before the committee, there were 752 items. There were 751 routine items that passed and one routine item that did not pass. I move passage of these items in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brokens.
Good afternoon, Madam President. Reporting on your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held and conducted by the best vice chairman of any of the city committees, Michael Rodriguez, held on June 15th, 2022. Yes, I am. The following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. On page two, one ordinance for granted privileges introduced by the local aldermen from the 30th Ward. On pages three through five include 24 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from Wards 1, 4, 6, 25, 27 through 29, 35, 38, 39, 47, and 48. On page six includes one re-subdivision ordinance located in the 28th Ward. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Workforce Development, Chairwoman Sibylski Garza.
Thank you, Madam President, and esteemed members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on June 9th, 2022, there were two items on the agenda. The first item was 02022 dash 1694, intergovernmental agreement with Cook County regarding extension and or modification of Chicago-Cook Workforce Partnership as grant sub- recipient and fiscal agent for Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Funds Act. 02022 dash 1694 was passed by unanimous voice vote of those members present. Hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider. report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider. The second item was a resolution, R2022-144.
Chairman Sodlarski-Garza, can we take these one at a time? On the first item, hearing no objections, so ordered. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. The second item was a resolution, R2022-144, expression of support for Howard Brown's health, non-nursing workers' efforts to unionize. R2022-144 was passed by unanimous voice vote of those members present. Hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable roll call, I first, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee on the Finance Report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes the report on Committee on Workforce Development, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Chairman Tunnie.
Madam President, and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on June 21st of 2022. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains document number 02022-1746 for the Amendment of Municipal Code Section 17-6-0403-F to permit non-accessory parking and RV and boat storage within Plan Manufacturing District Number 15. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains document 02022-1753 for the Amendment of Municipal Code Section 14X-8-803.2 by modifying cooling requirements for nursing homes and senior housing facilities. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Belatedly, I will recognize Alderwoman Hadden.
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly not an objection. I just wanted to speak on this item and thank Chairman Tunnie for making space and committee. And I want to thank all of my colleagues, Alderman Hopkins, Riley, Dow, and Lopez for talking through some of the challenging issues. I'm happy we were able to move forward with this ordinance. I would request all of my colleagues' favorable support as well. We're going to be able to provide some immediate cooling relief to our seniors and to residents in large buildings. And thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, and thank you to Commissioner Bowdoin and his team for working with us on this. So appreciate everyone.
Thank you, Walrond Hadden, and thank you for bringing this forward. It's something that was clearly necessary and a gap in our ordinance that now we'll be able to address as the summer months come. Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Pages one through nine contain various map amendments in the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 10th, 11th, 12th, 20th, 22nd, 24th, 25th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 32nd, 33rd, 34th, 37th, 38th, 40th, 42, and 44, and 47th Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 10 contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 1st, 26th, 27th, 32nd, 36th, 39th, and 42nd Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Tunnie. Next up, Agreed Calendar. Chairman Harris.
Madam President, I've received from the Clerk, Anna Valencia, a total of 75 items proposed for the Agreed Calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions for the following aldermen. Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Irving, Alderman Austin, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Smith, and Alderman Hadden. I move the passage of the Agreed Calendar in the omnibus, please.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, new business. The Clerk will call the wards, beginning with the first.
Claims, free permits, licenses, exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Landmarks and Building Standards. Regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Hopkins has proposed a resolution to call for hearings on Chicago Police Department's policies and practices regarding leaves of absence, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Dow has proposed a resolution to call for hearings on Chicago Housing Authority's security standards, which is referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Hairston and others have proposed ordinance for establishment of a piecebook ordinance, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Two committees having been called, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Sawyer and others have proposed ordinance for establishment of an Office of Neighborhood Safety and Office of Neighborhood Safety Advisory Commission, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Beal has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-6-230G5 to allow booting of motor vehicles on private property within the 9th Ward, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burke has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as William K. Flood Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Lopez and others have proposed a resolution to call for hearings on decline of City of Chicago food access policies for underserved residents, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderman Maldonado has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Irvin has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Title II by adding a new chapter 2-41 entitled Community Oriented Media Program, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Alderman Irvin also has proposed a resolution to call for hearings on data necessary to develop measures to ensure minority and women-owned business enterprises are included in private projects, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Alderman Ramirez Rose and others have proposed a resolution to call for public hearings on Chicago Transit Authority's minimized train and bus services, inconsistent train schedules, and train-bus delays, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Alderman Vasquez and others have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Titles 9 and 10 by modifying various sections and adding new Section 10-8-272 regarding closure of bicycle lanes, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Napolitano has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley and Alderman Vasquez have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Section 9-40-060, the further regulate prohibition of driving.
Alderwoman Hairston, can you please keep your voice down? In general, folks, I know that there seems to be a level of restlessness in the chamber, but out of respect, please keep your voices down. Please don't talk on your cellphones. Please exhibit a modicum of decor.
Alderman Riley and Alderman Vasquez have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Section 9-40-060, the further regulate prohibition of driving, standing, or parking on bicycle paths or lanes, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Riley and others have proposed a resolution for Amendment of the City Council Rules of Order and Procedure by modifying Rule 41 regarding requirements for direct introductions in the City Council Committees, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Tunnie has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Gardner has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 5035 West Lawrence Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Title 10 by adding a new chapter 10-14 regarding transportation planning requirements, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Hadden and Alderman Martin have proposed order for, to call for the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation to provide a report to the Committee on Finance identifying racial and geographic disparities in camera ticketing, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderman Silverstein has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 6008 North California Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. And Alderman Waggasback has proposed ordinance for a subdivision of GW Bucktown redevelopment, re-subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of all dramatic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next up, the approval of the Journal. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journals for May 23rd, 2022, regular meeting, the May 25th, 2022, regular meeting, or the May 25th, 2022, special meeting, and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Next up, miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
On the date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed up an ordinance to the Clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Mr. Clerk, can you please read the ordinance?
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, Section 1, that the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, July 20th, 2022, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the City Council Chambers on the 2nd floor of City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then, there is a determination in accordance with Section 7E of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the City Council may be conducted by video conference in accordance with applicable law. Any such determination will be posted on the City Clerk's website, along with an amended meeting agenda, indicating that the meeting will be conducted by video conference at 10:00 a.m. on Monday, July 18th, 2022. Section 2, this order shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on the omnibus.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the un, and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
The meeting is adjourned.